All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, July 22, 2025 Commission Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Markport?
Here.
Commissioner Matherley?
Here.
Commissioner Borella?
Here.
And Commissioner Borella is going to lead us in the invocation.
I picked this one out today because, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I picked this one out here today because the Donna Anna County Commission is considering removing prayer from their meetings. This is a really big deal. Everybody knows that, you know, before we officiate any kind of meeting, it's God first. So I just have a little prayer for Donna Anna. They make the right decision, not remove prayer from their meetings today. Heavenly Father, like the believers who came before us, help Christians across America to fulfill the great commission by making disciples of all nations. Help us to seize the amazing opportunities for evangelism that you place all around us. Show me how I can join my brothers and sisters in Christ in using my time, talent, and treasure wisely, and with a sense of urgency to reach the lost and built up. Your Church, in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Who follows in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the z symbol of perfect friendships among united cultures.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move on to our public hearing. We are going to discuss and hear public comment and consider ordinance number 2505, the Almagordo Solar Industrial Revenue Bond.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Chris Mierd with Mauer Firm, your bond counsel, with finance lawyers. So this is the ordinance for the Almagordo Solar IRB project, which is the second one of these you've seen recently. This is the one west of town here. It is for $210 million that the company intends to invest in solar panels and equipment and battery storage. It approves the form of the lease agreement, and in that, post the meeting, the last meeting, when you had the intent resolution and talked about some things you'd like to see there in terms of focusing on local hiring when possible and local vendors when possible, the draft of the lease agreement does have that in there, that the company is going to use its best efforts to meet that and try to hire locally and use local vendors when possible. The other terms in it has the payment in lieu of taxes. This one is slightly different in terms of amount of what the company is proposing from what NextTare proposed. That's the first one is NextTare. That was, they both share the same 3,500 per megawatt production, but this one has slightly less storage or half less storage, and so they're advocating for a lesser payment in lieu of taxes on an annual basis to reflect that they are having a smaller amount of gross receipts tax abatement, and then a smaller amount of personal property tax over the life of the project as it is depreciated. And I'll let them make that argument to you, but just to give you the heads up, that is the material difference in the lease agreements between the two projects. It's a little bit apples to oranges because of the size, NextTare being 280 million with 100 megawatts of storage and 150 megawatts of production. This one has slightly less storage. It approves the indenture of the bond purchase agreement. Those have all been reviewed, and with IRB's help and the county staff help, they are in position for you to consider. The, again, the significant things about an industrial revenue bond versus some of the traditional bond financings you might see is this is not an obligation of the county. The county has no obligation to repay. There is no county money being directed toward this project. The 210 million, as referenced in the par amount of the bonds, is what the company anticipates spending on the project as it develops over the term of the construction. And again, no gross receipts tax or property taxes are being pledged to repay this. It is not an obligation of the county. It is an economic incentive tool, and I know there was discussion at the last meeting about that. It is, this is statutorily permitted. This is a legal project. Should you choose to do it, it is a policy decision by the commission, but statutorily you do have the authority if you choose to do this type of project to do that. And we can continue to negotiate the final terms of the lease agreement, subject to your direction. This is the primary moment for public discussion. This is the public hearing. This is the moment for the commission to approve moving forward and approving the project. It would close sometime in this county year if you choose to do that. Happy to answer any questions about it, happy to answer questions about the documents. I know the company has two representatives here and their legal representation. They'd like to give you a little summary of where things stand and what they are requesting in terms of the payment in lieu of taxes.
Okay, I have something on the lease agreement.
Yes, ma'am.
Under Article II, Definitions and Rules of Construction on Page four, the related costs, it has, it has related costs means expenditures incurred or to be incurred with respect to the project, including without limitation, the acquisition, construction, assembly, and installation of the project property. I would like to have return to natural state put in there.
Okay. So just the remediation post-project, yes, ma'am?
They have an insurance bond on that to reclamation, right?
I will defer to the company. I know that they, that they, yes, that there is their intention and their representations that they are remediating the property back to its natural state.
And my question was kind of along the same lines, except upon the sale of the property, everything we agree on today goes on to, in the chance that it's sold?
Yes.
Everything will stay the same?
Yeah, so this lease agreement controls the entirety of the life of the project. If they decide that they're not doing the project or change the substance of it, they would have to come back to you in a mental lease, and you would have that approval. Or if it doesn't materialize, then the lease terminates and the remediation provisions would pick in. But yes, this is for the life of this project and the relationship of the county with this company. If it materially changed, yes, they would have to come back and seek your approval to do that.
So payment in lieu of taxes for the school districts, the school districts have to agree on this as well?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Borella, it is statutorily laid out. So four or five years ago, the state legislature, instead of leaving it to individual negotiations between the county and the company and each school district and the company, set forth a specific formula that says, okay, here's how we're going to determine this based on where the project is located, the student populations, and then we'll determine based on the size of the project and what the payment in lieu of taxes to the county is, then it will calculate for those, each school district in the county, what they are to receive. So it isn't negotiated with the school districts, but it is laid out statutorily so that they are made whole, yes.
Made whole by the company?
Yes.
Okay. And then you mentioned about hiring locals, that we may hire locals?
Well, so here's what it says, Madam Chair, Commissioner Borella, if you go to Page 14, 14. Yes, 418 and 419. So the company, the, these are obviously sophisticated projects, and so they have to have the right labor force, but they're going to use, what we had tentatively agreed to, subject to your approval, commercially reasonable efforts to hire locally and to use local vendors. So that they are going, to the extent that it's available, and the extent that the vendors are available, they will use local hiring as their commitment. If that, if there is no local force that fits what they need, they will bring in people to do this. So that is their efforts, their best efforts in good faith, commercially reasonable efforts to use local labor and local vendors as much as possible. Would you like to hear from the company, or is there any interest in that?
No, you know, the chaperone people, they offered school scholarships. Do, I know we just kind of lightly discussed it with this project.
Yes. So I was thinking about that during the day this morning. That has been discussed in terms of, if it was the inducement resolution or the last meeting, the company making representations, and again, I'll defer to them, they're here, of working with the local community, the local college branches, high schools, to provide some form of that. And so that, we can continue to discuss to get into the lease agreement in some form or fashion, but I'll defer to them on what their expectations are.
Okay.
On the very first page of this, I don't know if it makes any difference, but I'm kind of a stickler for spelling things right, and Almagordo's misspelled on the very, very first page.
Oh, I blame their lawyer, yeah. That's embarrassing. So I would never make that, Stan! Sorry. We'll get that fixed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, guys have anything more questions? Good. Are you ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to discuss here, comment, consider Almagordo Solar Industrial Revenue Bond.
Ordinance number 2505, got to fit that in.
Oh, yeah. What was it?
2505.
And with the number 2505.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we ready for our sheriff's office report? I know, it kind of slid in like a stealth.
I was thinking, he's stuffing off today.
Commissioners?
Yes.
I need to go back to item one real quick. First, I need to check and verify if there's any public comment desired.
Okay.
And then I just want to redo the motion for it to...
Oh, we need to add that.
...approval of, make a motion to approve the resolution and the lease.
To add into that lease?
To approve it, because we read kind of how it's phrased, but it needs to be...
Madam Chair, if you, on the ordinance one, yeah, you just see if there's any public comment, and then the ordinance, if you would just approve, or if such and such, approve the project and the related documents, which is in the title of the ordinance. So it's covered in there, but if you wanted to orally do that, that's fine.
Okay. Did we have any public comments?
And nobody signed up.
Okay.
I don't see the resolution number.
It got left off and she printed it on hers.
Okay. And into 2505.
Yeah, ordinance number 2505. Does he need to redo his motion?
Yeah, just approval of ordinance 2505 and the related documents.
Okay. I'll make a motion to discuss here, public comment, and consider ordinance number 2505, Almagordo Solar Industrial Revenue Bond.
And related documents.
And approve. Yeah, okay, and approve.
And related documents.
May I get it? Do what?
And related documents.
And related documents. We'll get it all right here in a minute.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why were we freezing last weekend? It's like the hobs of hail in here today. Is anybody hot but me? Ugh, it's hot. Okay, thank you. Just saying.
Like a little circus act there.
Welcome to the show. Yes, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner David Black, Otero County Sheriff. Our report for June, Sheriff's Office responded to 2,294 calls for service, generated 252 investigative reports, conducted 54 traffic crash investigations, had 75 arrests, six summonses were issued, issued 92 traffic citations, served 292 subpoenas for the courts, responded to 57 calls in Tularosa, 69 calls in Cloudcroft, and 387 calls in the city of Almagordo. For our narcotics division, we had 13 search warrants, made 32 arrests, had two agency assists, and they had 82 case reports generated. We did have one checkpoint case, seized about $685 in cash. We seized 15 vehicles, seven firearms, had 15 fugitives that were apprehended. They did investigate one overdose case that's still being looked at. We did have one jail possession case, and the drugs that were seized, we had 146 grams of meth, 5.4 grams of heroin, 23 Suboxone strips, 34.1 grams of cocaine, 35.91 grams of fentanyl powder, and 1,905 fentanyl pills. Total of about almost $56,000 worth of illegal narcotics seized. We didn't have any special events, public relations events. We did have some promotions that were held recently for the rank of sergeant. As a result of the testing, we had Deputy Mike Edwards, Deputy Carlos de la Cruz, Deputy Robert Wells, and Deputy Peter Villa. They were all promoted to the rank of sergeant. Sergeant Edwards and Sergeant de la Cruz, they've already begun their new assignments. Sergeant Wells and Sergeant Villa, I said they will soon start their new position, but they started them yesterday. So they are currently in, in that kind of the training portion with Lieutenant Garson. In our training aspect, most of the deputies have completed several of the mandated training that is done on local gov U. As we speak, I have four deputies attending the CIT class over at Civic Center right now. With these four completing the class, 90% of the SO have completed this training and are all CIT certified. So hopefully with the next class, I'll have everybody that is certified with the CIT training.
Can you explain what that is for people that don't know?
Basically, it's how to deal with anybody that's having a mental crisis of any kind, mental health issues and stuff like that. How to, they teach them how to recognize the symptoms, the way that people act and stuff, how to recognize, you know, the critical incident, how to speak with them, how to deal with them, and then also what resources are available to help them. A lot of times, you know, there are other agencies out there, other counseling centers and stuff like that, that we and stuff like that, that we can contact and see about getting them some additional help. So it, again, it's just a, it's week-long training, and it's pretty tough training. But that, that's what they do, they want to recognize, you know, what's going on with anybody that's having a mental type crisis. We do have Deputy Lopez, she recently completed a two-week DARE class in Oklahoma City. I think we have a total of seven DARE officers now within the agency, where we'll be teaching at La Luz, Cloudcroft, two schools in Chaparral, and we're still talking the possibility we'll be teaching at Tularosa also. In our many, Deputy Jorge Lopez, recently graduated the academy, he's about halfway through his FTO program. Deputy Oscar Velasquez, he has completed his cert by waiver, and he has also started his FTO program. Andres Pintor has completed his FTO and is now on solo patrol, as well as Deputy Gutierrez and Deputy Perez. They've also just recently finished their FTO and now are on solo patrol. I do have four new recruits, they are currently in pre-academy training, and basically what we do in pre-academy training is we give them the academy before they go to the academy, just so that they've got a little idea of what's fixing to hit them, what they're fixing to have to go through for 16 weeks. So it, you know, the people from the academy just don't know what you're doing, but keep doing it, because when you guys get here, they're top of, you know, top of the class, because they already know what's going on. And I just, we just try to do that to help them succeed.
I think you already had, I think you had Tularosa involved in that too, this time?
Yeah, I was gonna say, also involved is, we got one officer from Cloudcroft and one from Tularosa, so both are attending our pre-academy training, they'll go to the same academy, so we've kind of grouped them all together and say, you, you guys watch out for each other, help each other, you know, study groups, you know, whatever you need, we're all gonna work together on this, so hopefully we can, we can help both of those officers from those other agencies get through the academy, and then we'll, we'll discuss FTO after that with, with each chief, so. I know the one from Cloudcroft, the chief up there is already committed to, when she gets done, she'll go through a FTO with us, and then probably the last half of the FTO, we'll, we'll put her through FTO program in the village of Cloudcroft, so, just to kind of give them a jumpstart and make sure that they're ready to rock and roll when they get out of FTO. As it sits right now, I have two open positions, I also have two lateral applications on my desk, and I've got about 16 applications for a physical assessment that we will hold on August the 9th. So hopefully we'll, we'll get those positions filled real quick. In our vehicles, the last of the Tahos that we had, they are all outfitted, the equipment's all in them, they are in service, guys are using them now. Couple weeks ago, we went to Las Lunas and we picked up five more Tahos, so now we're waiting for equipment to arrive, so we can get those outfitted and get those in service as well, so. And hopefully, this next round of capital outlay money, I'll, I'll have a little more, hopefully I'll get to order about nine vehicles and get some of our, our old vehicles, sell them on the local, on gov, gov.com, whatever, to get rid of some of those, so. That's all I have for now, if you stand for any questions.
I was hoping Sean would show, I was gonna call you, and I based it out, and I apologized to come to where we could tell him happy retirement, tell him thank you. Have you, who's gonna take his spot down there?
As soon as he retires, Raul Robles, Sergeant Robles, will be promoted to a...
In the back of the room?
Yeah, that's him.
Yeah, that's him.
He gets the hot seat now, so, yeah, he will be the interim undersheriff. Yeah, he's, he's ready for it, he's been doing a lot of the work and stuff already, and he'll, he'll do great, he's, he's well-known in the community with all his PR stuff, yeah, I don't have any doubts that he will, he'll step in and he'll, he'll do a good job.
I'll email him some doozies.
There you go.
Yeah, we are gonna miss Sean yet.
It's a big seat, it's a big seat, we're gonna miss Sean.
Yeah.
Yep, he's tough shoes to fill, but, yeah, he got one that he could, he can fill it, so.
Well, we appreciate all your deputies' work getting all this, the drugs off the street and picking up the bad guys.
I just have one question.
Okay.
The jail case, one jail case, was that caught by the x-ray machine?
You know, I did my report last night with the numbers, and I did not get a chance to...
Was it by the x-ray machine?
I think it was a...
It was probably mail. They're doing, well, legal, they're using attorneys and putting Suboxone in attorney law, because we can't search it, we have to open it in front of the individual, and so yesterday they found a lot, like a lot, so, and legal, that's their main trend, they're trying to find, they know the body scanner's there, so they're gonna find other ways to get the contramatches, I believe that one is mail, we got one yesterday. Legal, as you said, you don't do a way.
Wow, crazy.
They always find a way.
I know.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, how are you guys today?
Good.
So, I'll start with this, and then we'll do the other thing, if that's okay?
Okay, if you say your name, please, for the record.
John Barney, 911 Director. So, for the month of June, a total of 11,851 calls into the 911 center, 2,742 911s, 4,565 administrative lines. That new statistic now, our automatic callback for 911s, we process 51, so if someone abandons a 911 call, it automatically calls them back, that means 51 said yes, they needed an emergency, which rang back into the 911 center. Out of 130 calls, so that's, that's pretty good. Alarm calls, 62, fire lines, 305, laws, 1,097, and outbound, a little over 3,000. We had an abandonment rate of 4.33%, 130 calls, and a new statistic this month, the busiest time of the whole month was 3:00 PM, and they processed between the hours of 3:00 PM and for 859 calls for the whole month.
Wow.
Staffing, we have six positions open, two are in background phase, and we, I have one in background phase for our deputy director position that we are advertising. We did go to the Cherry Fest, we had people at the Cherry Fest, Reddy Fox did not appreciate it, it was a little too hot.
A little hot.
For Reddy Fox, so Reddy Fox was not out there.
Reddy Fox was a hot fox.
Yeah, it was not there and everything like that, but we are attending an open house this weekend down in Chaparral, so hopefully Reddy Fox will come up for that event. Just a little update on the ESINet project for the state, the ESINet project is live, they did go live last week throughout the state, so meaning that we are now seeing voice-over IP lines via 911. They went live up in Burnley County, Albuquerque, Doniana is live, and it's only for T-Mobile customers currently right now. So T-Mobile was ready to go live with it, so if you have T-Mobile, you'll be on the new ESINet, meaning that when you call 911, you won't hear old-fashioned switchboards, like the trunk is switching, so it's all silent, and when we transfer calls, you won't hear any type of dial tones or trunk switching or anything, it's seamless and actually speeds up the process. Ours, we had a little hiccup in ours, because we moved to that new phone system, Carbine, so they had to redo some of the technology and get recertified, our certification has passed, so now we're moving to the next step with Motorola to actually get onto the ESINet process and finalize the testing there. So we should, over the next two months in the state of New Mexico, it's gonna be very finicky with 911s, and I see that, we may see some misroutes happen until they actually finalize everything properly. And then the last thing for some training, our EMD is coming up, our Emergency Medical Dispatch is coming up at the, in November, so we're starting the process early to make sure everyone's continuous education hours are in, and doing that recertification process for our Emergency Medical Dispatchers. They're required to do 12 hours of training each year, with at least one or two hours, including medical training, so that's where we're at with that. I stand for questions for anything along that?
You said T-Mobile was ready, what about Verizon and all the others?
Verizon and AT&amp;T have not submitted from, as of last week, they were not ready for it, the certification did not pass just yet. They believe over the next couple of weeks, we should see them jump on, onto the ESINet service, and like, so like, Doniana County right now, MIRDU, they're operating on legacy and the new ESINet system, so depending on how the phone rings, it does not, all you'll end up noticing is that you just don't hear a delay when you dial 911. So when you dial 911 now, there's about a three-second delay, you'll hear the tandem click, so it sounds like they're pulling a pin out of something and plugging it back in, that is how the old-fashioned ways of doing it was, and now you won't even hear it, the phone immediately will start ringing as soon as you dial 911. You'll hear that delay in that, and the, the phone is, we hear, the phone rings immediately into the center, there's no delay in that aspect, which actually speeds up the process a little bit more when we're on the ESINet service. There, there is more, could be misroutes based off of GIS and how things are put into the MSAG, which is the National Mapping Database for the United States, so if we have an address, just say Main Street here, and it's Main Street in Albuquerque, there could be a possibility that it may route to Albuquerque, but with that, we can actually go in and actually figure out why the misroute happened, and then reroute it back to, no, it needs to come to our center, so next time it shouldn't do that. But we will have capabilities of transferring everything in the state of New Mexico, including surrounding states, because Texas is on ESINet, so we'll be able to be able to transfer seamlessly. So it shouldn't be any major hiccups on that aspect.
Sounds good.
Complicated.
Yeah.
I mean, is that click, that might bother some?
So, it, when we transfer the call, it confuses callers that we, it sounds like we hung up on them, and it's not, so most of the time when we transfer a call, we have to say there's gonna be a silent, it's gonna be silent for a second, you're gonna hear a click, that's just literally us, we are not anymore, but it's the tandem, literally pulling a pin out to plug it into the next selective router. So with the state, we're gonna be on one selective router, so all calls are gonna get funneled to this one selective router, and then based off of the geofence, which is I-3 technology, will route down to the proper local PSAP that needs to handle that, that call, based off of the MSAG and ESN numbers. So every tower is assigned an ESN number, like a three-digit number, which each PSAP owns one of those towers, and that's how it kind of gets routed.
That's why we pay him to do this job.
That's right.
A lot of stuff that happens in the background when you dial 911, it actually even gets sent to Washington State, your 911 call, or Washington DC before it even routes, and it happens in milliseconds, because it actually has to go through the national 911 router before it even comes back into our center.
So, what happens, people like me, I have literally never called 911, I call 2210. I mean, just, it's born and raised that way, so what happens when I call for an emergency on 2210, how does that mess things up?
It doesn't, the dispatchers are, we see, as you can see our numbers, we do a lot more admin calls, and we do get a lot of 911 emergencies on our admin lines, it doesn't change the difference, they just handle a call just like normal, I, we talk to the dispatchers, which is when we train, an admin line and a 911 line is exactly the same thing, it just has a fancy three-digit number to call it, so, there's not, in my eyes, it doesn't really change much, so.
And how many traveling dispatchers do we still have?
We have none, but we are bringing two more in now, for a four-month contract, just to help us right now. We're in a crisis, a staffing crisis, so hopefully we can bring these in, so the two that we have in training now, we can get them through, and then the two additional, one actually will start next week, and then we have another one that just started background phase last week, so hopefully we can process her a little bit quicker, she's from El Paso, very good experience in call, call centers, not in 911 setting, but in a call center, so we believe we can process her pretty quick through the training phase too. With the new technology we brought in with ComCoach and stuff, it speeds up that process of training, so they understand a little bit more, and I think we'll be, we're good there. Now that the season has come into recruitment, we'll hopefully get out there and start recruiting, the fair's coming up, we're gonna attend the open house on Holloman, we do have, one of our new hires is a military spouse, so, and she's been saying she was here at least a couple of years before they get moved, so at least we'll have her for a little bit longer, so I think we'll, we'll start catching up here in staffing here as soon as we can get out there and advertise a little bit more.
And the travelers, the company they work for takes care of all their credentialing, their licensing, all that's done through the...
Yeah, yeah, and they actually find travelers that are credentialed through, like, that are there, so like, we do APCO Emergency Medical Dispatch, they will find travelers that are certified in that, same thing with Flex, we use Flex, they will find travelers that are very familiar with Flex, so it comes in, it's a seamless process, and we, we have conversations with their CEO of the company, and we pretty much say, this is what we need, this is how we're doing it, they're gonna be working all three disciplines, or do we just need them as a call takers, and they'll find those contractors throughout, and hopefully that will, when we had them, we had some good ones when we did, and it helped us out a lot, so our night shift dispatchers are struggling, there, there's not many of them right now on night shift, and they're working a lot of overtime, so hopefully we can give them that, that break to let them have a couple of days off and have these travelers in here to support them too.
That's all I got? Anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
So, now I'm gonna do our other things.
Thank you.
So, we'll start off with our two awards. So, during the fire in Mescalero, we posted, we processed a lot of calls, not just only we handled calls all the way in Mescalero, we processed all calls down here in the basin, and Yacella and I stayed at night and sat with the night shift dispatchers for a while, just because the calls were still being, they were still coming in from all over the place, because how big that cloud of smoke was and everything. So, during that call, one of our dispatchers took a call for a one-year-old child in response had not breathed and that fell off a bed in Chaparral. Caller's very frantic, the dispatcher stayed very calm, cool collected when she took the call. Unfortunately, we had to figure out different actions at this point, because that ambulance was coming from Anthony, and we've been seeing a lot of that lately, where the ambulance from Chaparral's coming from Anthony, so it's a very long transport, or a long response time for them. So we started to figure out other techniques, calling need of air to get a helicopter en route, we ended up calling El Paso Fire Department, they came up, they found, they got the baby, they got the baby breathing, and they transported. So today, we want to be able to award Abigail Vistilli for her lifesaving award for the actions that she was able to provide to the caller and the child, and I don't think they're here, we did invite them, and they were planning to come, we are actually gonna have the child and everybody come. So she gets her award, she also gets a leaf, we have a tree in dispatch, that is a family tree, so every time they, Tree of Life, every time they do a lifesaving award, a baby delivery, or CPR save, they get to get a leaf and they get to decorate the tree where they want to, and we now get to create a Tree of Life within the 911 center and everything, so that is what she is receiving today. Do you guys want to... Here, we'll stand over here.
Congratulations, that's pretty cool.
And she'll also get a challenge coin, and she gets a accommodation bar, so. And just to kind of give you an idea, like, with the dispatchers, we're not robots, we do have feelings too, and during this call, she actually was crying during the whole call, because it's, it's something that is very emotional and everything like that, and we, as they're crying, it's emotional to them, I know her sister just had a new baby, so it's very hard for a dispatcher when they have to handle these calls, so just to sit here and think about that's what they go through, and, you know, the one call that she takes is not, is their bad day, so if you think she takes 100 calls a day, that's 100 bad days for her, so, good job, Abigail. The next one, Yacella is going to present that one. So the next one's gonna be our communication of the quarter, or employee of the quarter.
I'm just gonna read it, because it's a lot of big work to do. So our employee of the quarter goes to Taylor Dennis. Taylor Dennis has gone above and beyond this quarter, and we are proud to recognize her as our employee of the quarter. While her main role is in the NCIC Records Warrants Division, Taylor saw the pressure our communications floor was under due to station shortages, and she didn't hesitate to step in and help. By offering support during her regular work hours, she not only helped ease the workload, but also boosted morale among her fellow team members. but also boosted morale among her fellow team members. Her dedication, flexibility, and tempered attitude truly embody what it means to lead by example. Thank you, Taylor, for your commitment to the mission and for always showing up when your team needs you most.
No, it's just a light.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And then the last thing is for the commission. So as you guys know, we recently went with Carbine, our new features. And so they had some people come and create a video for us during our Go Live project. So I just wanted to be able to share that in two minutes, just of the Go Live, a little about the center, and it kinda is a cool little sneak peek of what our center looks like and our people that are within the center operating those phones and radios. So I'll let you guys take it, and then that's all I have for you guys.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
We are getting ready to cut over to Apex, the new call handling system.
Well, to me, it's a great starting point for New Mexico and bringing New Mexico into next generation 911, especially at a cloud-based service. So we are the stepping stone for it, and I know there's other agencies looking at it waiting for us to go live, so they can come and visit us. I'm ready to post them on Facebook to tell them that we went live.
I think that it is so freaking cool.
You know, Carbine offers features that a lot of other call handling companies do not. We get a lot of snakes here. Now we can send this stuff to our account control officers, so they know exactly what they're walking into.
I'm very interested in the translation services, the way that those work is so cool to me. Violet chats, and that one's gonna be really good. We do get calls about breaking and entering, calls where people are afraid to answer our questions.
Responder Connect is a service that basically is gonna give officers the ability to get some more accurate, real-time information about what's going on. Video footage or pictures of what's happening. It helps prime a more appropriate response.
Today, we've been able to deploy it a lot of different, much larger agencies than we have in the past. Our name has been more and more prevalent, mainly because we get great customer base that shares a lot of great feedback about Carbine, what we're able to do, not only for the agencies, but what we do after our live. How we treat them with a white glove and ultimately continue to receive their feedback to generate new capabilities that will make the job easier down the road.
As we know, certain, you know, other technologies upgrading, like cell phones, voice-over IP lines that people can dial from everywhere, we need to be able to bring this, this technology into the 911 centers, so the call takers have a better understanding what is being looked at. We should be looking at everybody as an equal standpoint, if it's law enforcement or fire DMS, 911 should be on the board of the same, same path.
We have way more advanced technology, and it has been really nice. And honestly, we rely on it a lot.
I feel like we have backing and that we're, we're seen, we're cared about, or at least I feel like we have people that are behind us. They're gonna help us help the people that are calling.
So proud of our dispatch center, so cool. Thank you, John, for that.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Matt Clark, emergency services.
Good morning.
I don't have a cool video to follow, I'm sorry.
Slacker.
If I'd have known that, I might have prepared something.
I agree with Vicky, slacker.
There's always next month.
I'll show you a lot of Tom's roads.
Oh, yeah.
For June, the volunteers responded to 181 calls of service, 22 fires, and 118 EMS calls. Continue to really hit in the EMS, unfortunately. Structure fires, we ended up with three fires, but 12 departments responded to them throughout the month. So busy, busy month for them. On code enforcement, they did 13 solid waste, two illegal dumpings, six open burns. We were during, that was all during the burn ban, and people were still lighting off fires. So we did trash pickup, six calls for that. The, our office ran 15 fire calls and 12 EMS calls through the month. We did seven inspections of commercial facilities. They opened up 26 cases, completed 12 follow-ups, closed nine, and did the three fire investigations on those structured fires. We still have the active warrant on Mike Court, Tractor Road. He has roll-offs on his property and is slowly filling them and slowly taking them, I think it's, I remember right there from Billy Goat, so they're coming to pick them up. It's just slow. But hopefully, hopefully he continues down that path and expedites a little quicker. First Street, we have pre-trial scheduled for September 10th.
This Bull's Acres?
That's the Bull's Acres one. He pled not guilty to that, so pre-trial, September 10th. Three Popular has a bench warrant for him, he failed to show. And that's the updates that I have for you at this time. Cody has an update on Almaturo for you.
Good morning. Cody Welsh, all kinds of force supervisor. So 53 Almaturo was dismissed with prejudice, so I can't refile the case, but I'm gonna see what other alternative plans I can.
Why?
It was scheduled for 1:30 on the 17th, and I logged in to attend the sentencing hearing and never got approved. It had been changed to 11, and I wasn't aware of that.
Cause it was a no-show, is that what it boiled down?
Yes, sir. Yeah, no-show on my part.
We, we can still, we can file again, we can't file on those charges specifically, but the situation exists still, so every day is a separate offense. So just file a new, just file a new case.
Okay. Thank you.
I got more.
There's more.
So back to First Street, he pled guilty, guilty to what, I mean, not guilty to what?
To the accumulation of garbage on his property.
After we cleaned it up, he brought?
He brought more in, yes, sir.
So how does he get away with saying not guilty? Did he look?
Yeah, so it can go to court.
Okay. So what about the other one on, on Southland Road? I don't remember what that street name, well, we looked at it with the dumping, the sewage waste, and they don't have a septic tank out there and?
Desert, Desert Star?
Yeah.
23 Desert Star.
You were supposed to go out, after we talked at it, looked at it, you were gonna go back out?
On, on septic stuff, we can't, we have to pass that on to the EPA. So I forwarded that on to Aaron for the septic stuff. Jeremy is working on the case for the accumulation of garbage.
Because I, I just, blows me away, they got red tags on the property, they can't get electricity, and here they are, they're dumping raw sewage into a non-permitted, and they just get to keep on moving on. Nobody can do anything. Okay. Sorry. That's all I have.
On Three Popular, I've been patrolling there several times a day, trying to get in contact with the people that are, as caregivers, so I can get identifiers from them and take them to court. From what I hear, he's like 85 or 87, and a bench warrant on him doesn't really?
Oh, so it was issued on him?
Yes.
As the property owner?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So I'm gonna go by there and try to make contact with the people that are living on the property, that are generating the mess.
Yeah, I don't know how that works. He, I mean, literally never goes outside, and you know it's the caregivers that are doing this.
Right, so I'm, I'm trying to get in contact with the caregivers. So I'm going by there several times a day to, to try to catch them outside and make contact with them. So I'm trying to get that along again.
The only way you can, on a situation like that, is you can really only go after the property owner, isn't it? Regardless of what the people do on there? Aren't they totally responsible for it at the end of the day?
At the end of the day, the property owner is responsible, but we have means to go after the renter as well, so to speak, or in this case, the caregiver, the tenant. Caregivers, a little bit harder, you know, if it's a, if there's tenants, we can opt to go after the tenant or the property owner or both.
It's his son.
To get, you know, part of that would be the, if the tenants aren't going to respond, putting pressure on the property owner to either get it cleaned up or start an eviction process. Caregivers, that's gathering the proof to show that it's clearly them is, is what would be necessary to move forward. Cause, you know, by default presumption, if there's a mess on someone's property, it's the responsibility of the owner. If there's some other thing occurring, then we need evidence to show that it's that.
Do you know anything about, they're putting in a, it's not a trailer park, but it's right, when you turn to go up 82, it's right across from where Morris Trading Post used to be, and now there's some old dilapidated mobile homes there. One of them's completely disintegrating. I'm just afraid that's becoming a real dumping site there for, there's people that live there, a couple of them have electricity and stuff. But I don't know what we can do about it, but it's getting worse all the time, and it's right on the highway, it looks pretty bad.
We'll, we'll swing by and see what we can do.
Check it out?
Yep.
Yeah, cause it's, I mean, they're, they're not livable, I'm not sure why they're hauling those up there.
Well, each one of those mobile homes sitting on that property is taxable, property tax. So maybe that's another avenue that we can make sure that it's on the tax rolls. Do they have like five or six of them out there?
Yeah, there's quite a few. I think there's two that are lived in and the others are just falling apart.
And then for the volunteers, they did, some of them gave me recruiting numbers. Borough Flats picked up two additional people last month, Alma West, two, High Rolls, one, and Timberon, seven.
Yay, that's good news.
Seven.
That's really good.
That's good.
What, how did they do that?
Up at Timberon, I'm sure it's sitting at the water meeting that they have, and then sitting at the golf course or the restaurant there.
And they just did that Fourth of July weekend too?
Yeah. And that area is, is growing. A lot of people working from, from home with the advent of Starlink.
True. Okay, anything else? Okay, thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Good morning, Commissioners, Tom from Orotero County.
Where's your shirt?
Good morning. I know, where's the Hawaiian shirt?
Where's your shirt?
Kind of disappointing, that's kinda blah.
That's not a one shirt twice a year thing. Okay, so for the month of June, we had some culvert cleaning going on throughout the mountains to try and get ready for rainy season, along with cattle guards. We've been patching throughout the county and also down in Oro Vista for the projects that we're doing. We've started chip sealing, we blew the equipment up from far south into Oro Vista, and we're beginning to chip seal up in there. Brush trimming throughout the county, side maintenance throughout the county. And we just started flooding at the end of June, and we assisted, we had three Dozer crews on two fire lines, the Seven Springs Fire and the Pinyon Drive Fire.
You got the Mesa fixed yet?
No.
How are things going on the Mesa? Cause I know that's?
It's two steps forward, three steps back. We basically, I was showing Commissioner Mathely a few pictures earlier today, that I had Dale Green out on the 506 and FY52, this side of the Mesa, and he came in. I got a phone call Thursday evening from one of the BLM workers out there that we got flooded out. He went in Friday morning, fixed it up, came back out, and then BLM called me again, and everything he had fixed was gone again. We finally have, from Timberon to Owen Prather, and from Timberon up to Pinyon is open, and last time I looked at the weather, we're still open from Pinyon down to Dell City. And it's hit or miss, depending on what Mother Nature decides to do. We, it'll be in next month's report, but we lost roughly 300 miles of road out there.
Yeah, I saw, saw some of those pictures of you standing in that thing that's over your head?
Yeah.
Where the road used to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, we appreciate the road crew working on that, I know that's been a heavy lift.
Yeah, and you know, that new loader we ordered up came in just in time because the loader that we were replacing lost the transmission the same day as the new loader showed up. So it was good timing.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
So what are you gonna do with that one, that big, big washout? Are you just gonna make a?
So that one there, for right now, right now, all we're trying to do is one lane, get at least everything passable. And we still have roads we haven't even been able to look at yet, cause we can't physically get to them. That one there is one of the, that's actually 506 between Pinyon and Dell City. We went in there with a loader and grader and a couple of dump trucks and basically shifted everything to both ends that it washed out.
It's a lot.
Yep.
All right.
Just hopefully the people down there are a little patient.
For the most part, they have that.
Yeah.
If it's the most part. Thanks, Tom.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Mark from Acosta Lincoln National Forest. I wanted to give you an update this morning on some of the timber operations for this year and next, and the situation with fire. So Sacramento Ranger District, we had two sales in FY25 Jeffers and Crook. The Jeffers sale was an integrated resource contract. It was 267 acres and 856 CCF. The Crook was cutting pile trees 14 inches and under, which is basically a fuel reduction project. It was a service contract and, and completed earlier in the year. On Smokey Bear, we had a large project at McBride, which was skid, fell, and dead trees. So it was mostly a fuel reduction type of project, and that wood was made available to the public, and it still is available to the public for fuel wood.
Where is that wood located?
That's on the east side of Route Oso in the mountain. The other one was a Ravinton, is unit two, is a fuel wood sale. So that was 17 acre sale to a single purchaser for fuel wood. It was 43 cords, and that was completed in April. Other contracts are awarded, FY25 on the Sacramento Ranger District, we had the Sixteen Springs Project. It had two sales, Beard West and Beard East. Those were 394 acres, one of them, other one was 374 acres. And those are, are, will soon be underway. Let's see, so the, the total for FY25 was 803 acres, and the total volume in CCF was 6,600, or 6,600 CCF. So that's about the typical volume of sale that we have in a year. So it's important to keep that pipeline up. So in FY26, we've got more sales planned. Most of those are part of the South Sacramento Restoration Project, and that project will go on, there'll be a pipeline of timber for the next several years from that sale. And that project will go on. There'll be a pipeline of timber for the next several years from that sale. First one's Monument. It's seventy-four acres. The next one's Bridge, and it's a hundred and forty acres. Rogers is four hundred and seventy-nine acres. And the last one is Crisp. And that sale is part of the Mexican Spotted Owl Experiment with the Fish and Wildlife Service. Let's see. The next one is April, is the other experiment treatment. It's seventeen hundred CCF and two hundred and fifty acres. So the total plan for FY twenty-six is nine hundred and sixty-four acres and seventy-one hundred CCF, which is a little increase from this, this past year. So the next important thing is reforestation. So we're working on a cone collection project right now. And we're planning on replanting about three hundred acres or eighty thousand seedlings in FY twenty-six. So the next thing I want to talk to you about is fire and fuels. So the Lincoln, I think you know now, is currently under moderate fuel danger forestwide. The restrictions were rescinded on the third of July to let the public enjoy the outdoors. So we've only had a few small fires in the last few weeks. They're mostly from lightning strikes and mostly in, in dead trees. So all of those are being responded to though. So we currently have four engines on the force for initial attack and we've got multiple prevention patrols that are still active. So the Alamo Gordo Air Tanker Base closed on the fifteenth of July. But if there's a need for any air tankers or anything, we can still use air tanker asset units from other places. So in terms of fire severity, all the resources are gone now except for law enforcement officers. And those two currently, because of the issues in Route Oso, are on the Smokey Bear District. And for fuels, we finished a Jeffers pile prescribed fire over the Fourth of July weekend because the conditions just lined up to be perfect to burn on Saturday and Sunday. So that was about an eighty-eight acre project. It was actually a little bigger, but we burned eighty-eight acres. So we'll keep looking for windows that are optimal for prescribed fire. I suspect that most of the prescribed fire, the next ones that we do will probably be in the fall of the year when the conditions line up again because of all the moisture we're getting now. And I think that's it unless you have some questions.
A lot of those sales you got that you're posting, are they just thinning sales? Mastication sales? Or is there any timber worth talking about, solid mill timber available on those?
Yeah, there are a couple of sales. We usually have about six thousand CCF, which is a variety of acres a year. So most of those timber sales are merchantable timber. They're not all clear cuts. They're mostly thinning.
I just, the other day, I was going to Cloudcroft last week and I saw log truck coming down. I was wondering where they was coming from. So I was just wondering, and it was, they were logs. They were good timber logs.
It could have been us. We have two active sales up there now.
When I was driving through Mescalero in the last few days, there's some really big piles of stuff that's been piled up. Do you have any knowledge of what they're gonna do with that? It's all dead.
Timber?
Yeah. I mean, but it's just, it's not really timber. I mean, it's just piles of wood. They're kind of stacked up in cones. There's a bunch of them.
That's right there, right when you come on the reservation on the right side of the road. They're, I think they're gonna wait till the winter and probably burn it whenever they get.
There's a bunch of it there.
So one of the issues we have, the small diameter wood, there's really nowhere to take it. There's not a pellet mill or pulp mill or an OSB mill or anything like that. So most of that wood is paid people to cut down and pile up or either. It's a service as part of the contract. So the logger gets the wood and in return, instead of paying us, he does some kind of service work. And a lot of that work is to pile wood up like that. And it's usually made available to the public for fuel wood.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Nope.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Trent Parker, Project Manager.
Good morning.
Been a busy month and it's gonna be a busy next several months. We got a lot of projects all started at the same time. Chin's Roof Replacement, we're still waiting on the pre-authorization agreements. And for us and the architects are ready to get it going, but we're kind of just sitting on our hands until that comes along. Flickin' Center, the brick veneer repairs on the back, I'm meeting the structural engineers actually out there today. We've got a purchase order to them, so we're getting ready to get all that engineering done so that we can repair the backside of that building and get that complete. It's not a hazard any longer. Alamo West Fire and Rescue, the over excavation on the footings at both stations has begun. One is completed and ready for structural steel and forming for concrete. Bowles Acres, the over excavation for those footings will start next week. And so we're looking to get those water tanks moving on along. We've got the delivery for all three tanks coming up in August. So we're hoping to get that one wrapped up fast. Otero County District Courthouse, we're approximately ninety percent complete with design development. And the next steps is the contract documents and specifications. So we're moving right on along with that and looking to have a meeting here real soon to verify different aspects and different specifications within the plans of what we want as far as casework and stuff like that. Twin Forks and Bent Flood Improvements, we're working on design for that. We've had several meetings to identify problem areas and possible fixes for those areas. That's moving along. Railroad Avenue Bridge, we've got the task order signed and a PO has been cut to them for the drainage studies to start and everything for that bridge. Otero County Health Clinic Repairs, we've got the purchase order out to the contractor and we're getting, working on getting that scheduled to begin. And we'll get with the health clinic to notify them of construction and everything, so.
And that's all outside the building, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's repairing all the rotted stuff that was kind of halfway done to begin with. We're gonna be going back with a, what they call a mo strip around it. It's not quite a sidewalk. It's just a two-foot concrete, just to keep water and everything away from the building to prevent any, any damage in the future. Jack Rabbit Flats Volunteer Fire Department, they, I've been asked to quote adding a training room to one station and adding an addition with a training room onto the other station. I've got one quote back waiting for approval from the department. The other quote, they're finalizing a few different pricing aspects of it, but then we're looking to try to get that going. We're trying to keep it within a certain budget. We Volunteer Fire Department, the insurance claim was approved and the purchase order's been sent to the contractor. So we're gonna be working on getting that, that station repaired from the damage from somebody running into the building. Don't have any current demo projects, but been in talks with Cody. There's some coming up on the horizon, so once those come about, we'll get those taken care of. The Shooting Range Improvements Grant, we're looking, Mark's hoping to have that checked within the next week or so from, for that grant. And so we're already working on the scope of work to put that one out for bid so that we can get all his needed improvements completed. Chaparral Law Enforcement Facility, we're waiting on the, the agreements for the funding for it. But been talking with the sheriff and Matt and everybody involved. And we've got some other proposals for design, which may could save us quite a bit of money on the design itself. So we're trying to explore different aspects to try to stretch that funding out as much as we can. Because we're already gonna have to phase that project at least three phases. So we're hoping not to make it four, but we'll, we'll see what happens. Cloud Country West in Upper Cox Canyon, foundations have been completed for the pump house buildings. And weather permitting, they're gonna pour concrete next week. And so, and then it'll probably take them another week and have to get the two, two buildings erected. The Animal Shelter renovation in Canopy, we got the purchase order sent to the contractor for the canopy. And talking with Loretta, we're gonna have to kind of put on hold the renovation of the kennels because they're at max capacity, so it's hard to clear out any areas. So we'll kind of play that one by year just to, to get in there when they have a little bit more population.
I know.
That's the problem.
I thought they were going to do the canopy and then put some portable pins under them till we could start that, the inside part.
Yeah.
Is that...
I'm not, I'm not real sure what our plans are on that, but, but we do want, we are gonna get the canopy up. That way we do have some options and they have a little bit of shade back there. EOC Generator UPS, we're adding a new generator, new backup UPS system to that building so that they have all their equipment backed up that's, that's necessary. And the existing generator that's currently at, at the site that we wasn't able to convert to three-phase, we're gonna actually take that generator up to Bent and install it at the Bent Fire Station so that they have backup generation. Other than that, we're just trying to wrap up a lot of other little small projects and pricing out other new projects, and so it's been busy.
So Trent, why are we still waiting on Eric's occupying his building? Why is that not done?
So it's complete. The only thing that he's waiting on is, and Sergeant Emery's been helping him with that, and, but he's been having to be out of office for personal reasons a little bit here lately. But he's waiting on his internet.
Anything else?
Nope.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trent.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
Lena Sisler, the Correctional Services Director. For the month of June, our average daily jail population was a hundred and sixty-one. Total population today is a hundred and fifty-six. In-house population, one thirty-six, I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. We have a hundred and thirty-six, excuse me, males. I have a hundred and ten females, twenty-four. Have three at Otero Prison, five on treatment furloughs, three out of county court holds. They're out in another county and they have both charged, they're out of county in ours. Four furloughs, just regular furloughs, and one for Lincoln County. We do have four juveniles, two at Lee County and two at Donna Anna County. On June twenty-seventh, they did a warrant roundup and we, our population rise significantly. I think, I was back there looking, we're short on female officers. So there was, we got like twenty-two and like eight or nine on stretch. So. In facility courts, we, in municipal court, we had fifty-four. Magistrate, we had a hundred and eighty-one. District Court, we had a hundred and twenty-one. And out of county courts, which we do on Google as well, it was eleven. We had eight magistrate court in-person hearings and three in district. As far as staffing, we have nine full-time officer vacancies. One full-time office specialist, because one was promoted to admin assistant. We had three full-time detention officers resigned and I have three replaced. So it's pretty much three of those, three came in. But I did get a female out of it, so that means I have three females now. We conducted forty-hour basic detention training. I do have two detention officers at CIT training this month, or this week, actually, sorry. They did cancel, New Mexico Counties did cancel the de-escalation training for detention. A lot of the facilities are short-staffed, so everybody pulled their staff out of the training for detention. And next week, I'll have two supervisors going to, I'm supervisors, of course, I believe it's in Portales. We did transport twelve males to Las Luminous, New Mexico Central, New Mexico Correctional Facility. And we did transport one male, transported to Terrence Place in Espanol in Mexico for treatment.
I missed, how many juveniles do we have?
Four.
House elsewhere?
We have two in Lee and two in Donna Anna. And we did receive a letter that Bruno Leo is going up, they're all going to equivalent four hundred and seventy-five. So they're gonna be sending out some as well. They go by a different code and there's only four facilities in the state, whereas in the past, there was like ten to twelve. So it's limited, so if we don't have housing with them, they don't have to accept our ju, well, I'm sure. Juvenile probation, we'll find a way to get them housed somewhere, but it may not be. However, we, right now, we have contracts with it, all four.
So when a juvenile comes into custody with our jail and you decide to send them to Lee County, is it the juvenile probation that pays for their housing?
No, the detention center pays for that.
We, the county?
Because they're our juvenile, yes, so. And a lot of times with the four facilities that we do press and have access to, it's a lot of, not necessarily, they don't have beds, they don't have the staffing. They have more strict requirements under the Children Code of what they have to provide for juveniles rather than an adult facility.
And I got that email, but I wasn't able to open the documents on it. Their substantiation for the doubling the price?
Right, I think, I believe, I sent the, oh, on ours, I sent it with my, the contract to this one. You couldn't open mine?
Yeah, I'm doing it from my county phone. It sucks.
I did send it with the contract to, to put an attachment on the agenda. I don't know if the, the email, it says medical increases.
I didn't think there was an attachment.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything with it.
There wasn't, there wasn't anything. Okay.
I can get it to you. It's, it's just an email just stating about the increased medical contract, whatever they have to provide in the juvenile facility, is the reason. San Juan was four seventy-five and I noticed now that they went, they were four seventy-five with Donna Anna and now we got a letter recent, last week, that Bruno Leo is gonna increase to four seventy-five as well.
So there's really no negotiating on that? I mean, it's...
I don't, I mean, if we don't have a contract with them, we're gonna be transporting to San Juan and then we're gonna be in a pickle here because it's a long transport.
Yeah, that is a long ways. And they're at four seventy-five also, so it wouldn't...
I have, I bet you, I'm not, I think Lee County will be next. We do have two there as well. And so, I bet you they'll fall into it with all the rest of it, because there's only four.
And we don't have any room to make accommodations for juveniles here?
Well, we can't house juveniles.
We can't?
No. You have to meet Children Code to house. And the requirements for children, you have to have educators. It's a lot more than an adult detention center than a juvenile. You have to administer medical, mental health, psychiatrist. It's way, it's expensive, more expensive than a child, than an adult facility. Any questions?
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Your pleasure.
Thank you.
You, you're not leaving, right?
Leaving where?
The room? You're gonna be here?
No, I'll stay.
Okay.
I was like, what are you wearing?
Did you wanna pull that twenty-eight to discuss it?
No, that one, that one, I mean, it is what it is.
Okay.
That one from the city I wanna pull.
Okay. All right. Okay. We have several items we're gonna pull for discussion from the consent agenda. And we're gonna pull number six, number seven, twelve, thirteen, twenty-three, and twenty-nine. So I'll go ahead and read the others and then we'll go back to discuss those. All right. Number two, request approval of accounts payable bill list BL forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty A, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-two A, and fifty-two B. Number three, request approval of resolution number seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-five slash one thirteen dash eighty-one. An agreement between the Mexico Department of Transportation and the Otero County for the local government road funds for pavement rehabilitation, chip seal in the amount of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars with a match of forty-nine thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. Number four, request approval of resolution number seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-five slash one thirteen dash eighty-two. An agreement between the Department of Transportation and Otero County Local Government Road Funds for a pavement rehabilitation project in the amount of three hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars with the county match of ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. Number five, request approval of resolution number seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-five slash... Number five, request approval of resolution number seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-five slash one thirteen dash eighty-three. An agreement between New Mexico Department of Transportation and Otero County Local Government Road Funds for a pavement rehabilitation improvement project in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars with the county match of sixty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. Number eight, request approval of resolution number seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-five slash one thirteen dash eighty-nine. A resolution of acceptance for colonius infrastructure project, number C I F dash six-seven-two-eight grant in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. New Mexico Finance Authority C I F award of a ten percent loan, twenty-two thousand, five-hundred, and a ninety percent grant, two-hundred-and-two thousand, five-hundred dollars and a match of twenty-five thousand dollars. Number nine, request approval of resolution number seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-five slash one thirteen dash ninety. A resolution of acceptance for colonius infrastructure project, number C I F dash sixty-seven, twenty-seven grant in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. New Mexico Finance Authority C I F award of a ten percent loan, twenty-two thousand, five-hundred, and a ninety percent grant, two-hundred-and-two thousand, five-hundred dollars and a match of twenty-five thousand dollars. Number ten, request approval of resolution number seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-five slash one thirteen dash ninety-one. Budget adjustments, final, twenty-twenty-five. Number eleven, request approval of resolution number seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-five slash one thirteen dash ninety-two. F Y twenty-twenty-five, fourth quarter financial reports. Number fourteen, request approval of resolution number seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-five slash one fourteen dash oh-four. A resolution to approve the lease management agreement with the Flickinger, Flickinger Center Performing Arts. Number fifteen, request approval of June fifth, twenty-twenty-five, regular meeting minutes. Number sixteen, request approval of June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, special meeting minutes. Number seventeen, request approval of June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, special meeting minutes. That's on there twice. Do we have two meetings that day?
Yes.
We did? Okay. Oh, that's right, okay, I was thinking, I just read that. Uh, number eighteen, request approval of July first, twenty-twenty-five, emergency meeting minutes. Number nineteen, request approval of healthcare assistance claims and disposition claims for July twenty-twenty-five. Number twenty, request approval of property liens for reimbursement of unclaimed decident disposition services for July twenty-twenty-five. Number twenty-one, request approval of financial records for the quarter ending March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Number twenty-two, request approval of a professional services contract with American Stewards of Liberty to not exceed the amount of twenty thousand dollars per fiscal year. Number twenty-four, request approval of the twenty-twenty-four Adam Walsh Act Implementation Grant, A W A, in the award of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to assist in advancing New Mexico's compliance with the Sex Offender Registration and Notification Act. Number twenty-five, request approval for fire departments to apply for F Y twenty-six, New Mexico State Fire Protection Grant Funds. Number twenty-six, request approval of F Y twenty-six Enhanced Nine-One-One Act Grant Agreement in the amount of eight-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars for enhanced nine-one-one services and equipment. Number twenty-seven, request approval of Cooperative Road Forest Agreement between Lincoln National Forest and, and the County of Otero. Number twenty-eight, request approval of contract amendment between Donna Anna Juvenile Facility in Otero County due to the daily increase from two-hundred dollars to four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars per juvenile detainee per day. Can I get a motion to approve those?
I will make a motion to approve the consent items.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we're, first item we pulled was number six. Request approval of resolution number seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-five, one thirteen dash eighty-five, designating the polling places for the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven elections. I know Commissioner Brel, you had a question on.
Just one question, you probably already know what it is.
Um, so, I wanted to read the statute, which is one-twenty-sixteen-two. It says a hundred feet from the door through which the voters may enter to vote at the Office of the County Clerk's alternate voting locations, um, mobile voting site, or any location used as a polling place on election day that is not a school, church, or private residence.
So I, um, did, did you make it over there to see if, um, other doors, um, like the front of the building, uh, would work?
So we did. We figure if we enter through the one to the left, um, it puts my hundred feet in the roadway, which would push it to the first parking spot.
So we can move it to the north side of the building?
We're still in the same building. We're just pushing it where it's not, right there at the gate.
Yay!
The door would be the left one and then they would come out, the double doors that they normally go in.
So the door entry is where the exhibit hall is basically, right?
I haven't got over the check, I just, I had, I, I knew, like, the gate, we can't make the gate count because there's no, it's not a door.
Right.
So, uh, if you want, um, cushion, um, instead of those doors that are on the side, after you go through the gate,
the one on the left.
The way to accomplish this, the buffer.
Oh, you're talking about on the west side? So where they build that little ramp?
The west side.
Yes, right in front of the ramp.
Okay.
So it's pushing it to the road, which would push it out of the road.
I knew you would be able to figure it out.
See how it goes and then go up there.
So it's on the other side of the building that we had been going in.
So we're still on the same side, same building, we're just going through the single door instead of going through the double doors. And repeating through the double doors.
Okay.
Yay, good job!
Is the Fair Board and the Extension Office okay with that, or?
Yeah, yeah, cause we have the whole building, that whole room.
Okay.
And then, so then that pushes the handicap parking back out into the parking lot too?
Um, we could still have the handicap inside. The parking is the parking, um, and they will still be able to drive around. They just can't campaign within that hundred feet, so they'll be pushed out to the first parking spot.
And is, is having that handicap coming through that gate, um, problematic?
Um, so far, we haven't had any, um, I know a lot of people use it. Like, we have one lady where, um, she can't get out, so we take her ballot to her, we have her voted, and then someone goes in, you know, gives permission to put it in the machine and stuff. We can't park underneath the covered area no more. But, uh, people still use it a lot, just so they don't have to walk so far, so I don't wanna get rid of parking inside the gate. I don't know, just so people can utilize it and don't have to walk from.
Just moving that will probably alleviate that congested area.
And then you won't have nobody just right there as people are driving in.
Yep. Perfect. I, you are the bomb, I need to.
Let's see if it works, we can try it, right?
Yay. That's all that went in.
And then, um, for the amendment for the second one, we're changing from the lodge to the fire station in Timor. So we wanted to do it this election, since it's a slower election, to see how it goes. And then we'll start next, the next one.
Alright, so we need to go ahead and approve number six. You wanna make the motion?
I make a motion to approve resolution zero-seven, twenty-two dash twenty-five dash one thirteen eighty-five, designating the polling places for the twenty-six, twenty-seven elections. I think I read the wrong one.
I'll second.
That's the one. All in favor?
Second with?
Aye. I'll be in the number seven.
Oh, it's in the wrong order, that's why, okay. So, request approval, resolution zero-seven, uh, twenty-two, twenty-five slash one thirteen eighty-six, designating the polling places for the twenty-twenty-five local elections also.
Okay. You wanna second it?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number twelve, she's like.
Number seven.
We just voted on number seven, we did six and seven.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're done with those.
Perfect.
Okay. Number twelve, request approval of resolution number seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-five slash one fourteen dash zero-two, update, update travel-in per D M policy.
I just couldn't figure out what, what the changes are.
Okay, so basically what this does is it just updates the travel-in per D M rates for the next year. Those rates come out every year, like in, end of April, first part of May.
From the beds, they do, yeah.
Previously, um, they were kinda hardcoded into the policy itself. But now, per the New Mexico Administrative Code, you just refer to those rates within your own policy um, so that you don't have to update the policy every year. But what they also did this year, they cleaned up some of the language and they also did a really good thing, it's gonna help us out and help everyone out a lot. For actual expense reimbursements, you only have to submit receipts for your lodging. You no longer need to, uh, submit receipts for meals. So what they're going to do is they're just going to pay meals at a flat daily rate. So that will help a lot.
Be good.
And that, those are the, those are the changes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, alright. I make a motion for the approval of resolution number seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-five slash one fourteen dash zero-two, update travel-in per D M policy.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Number thirteen, request approval of resolution number seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-five slash one fourteen dash zero-three. A resolution creating a treasurer's fee policy.
Okay, I have asked this to be pulled, um, on some of your items. The bad check policy, I have no problem with that, I understand that, that's a, that's a nuisance everywhere. The other stuff, you know, the county, the people of Otero County pay property tax for services. I don't understand how you can charge them some of these fees and some of this stuff for services that we owe them.
Yes, so the property taxes will pay for utilities, fire, lease. This, these services are additional services our staff take, such as research, uh, pulling lists for mortgage companies that take a substantial amount of time and take them away from other duties.
And, and Carl, I understand that. You can, you can go around this whole system, but I go, you got a, uh, public information or request that you can make on this? It's not gonna charge, I don't understand, that's part of our services, I believe. I, I just can't, I'm having a really hard time wanting to charge people. Now, if they give you a bad check, I don't have problems starting filing that. But we are a service provider to our residents and I don't understand how you can wanna charge them for, for this.
So a lot of, is there a specific service that you have an issue with?
Any of these services.
Okay. Cause the last three refer specifically to people that are not paying their property taxes, they're delinquent and we have to incur cost to auction off their mobile home.
That should, any of those costs should be added on to the sale or the cost of the sale, you can't.
Do that legally without having.
Having a policy.
Yeah.
I still, I mean, that, that's part of our job. That, that, in my opinion, that's part of our job. I have to listen to all these people gripe about the flooding and stuff, that's part of my job. You know, uh, Jay up there on all the public record requests, part of her job. That's part of R B's job, uh, that's part of Sylvia's job. I, I just don't understand how, when a road washes out, we go and we fix it. That's part of our job, that's a service.
To give some context, most of these are not mandatory tasks that we are required by state statute to do. We have just, as courtesy for years, have been doing them because people have requested it. But we have fallen behind the times, we, there are about half of the counties in the state have some type of fee policy that looks like this. This is pulled from Donna Anna and San Juan, and we actually lowered the prices for both of those counties. So if we don't have any type of fee policy, we are gonna be in the minority. And it's, it's not a situation where we can continue providing these services without any fees. It's a quest, a determination, the treasurer's office, we need to make, should we continue offering these that take away our staff from other important duties to get revenue for the county? Or should we pull back these services if there's not gonna be any fees set?
I, I, like you say, these mobile homes and stuff, that's a very gray area because that's just like a car, that's a registered vehicle in the state of New Mexico. So D M V should be, if anyone implementing fees, they should be doing it.
Unfortunately, it's on us.
But movement certificates always come from the treasurer's office, because they have to have a tax.
Excuse me, but a lot of these, quite a few of these have been in place, we just haven't had a policy for them. So the mobile home movement certification permit sticker, we've always had that fee. We're just trying to incorporate that into a policy. On some of the tax rule things, tax service companies, those are businesses that are requesting these delinquent tax rules or these tax rolls. And so those, I don't, I have not seen a private citizen come in and request that. It's usually a bank or a, um, a business.
And a lot of them are not local.
Correct.
Selena, what do you do whenever somebody sells a house and they call for you for, uh, like the HUD deal report and all that, title search and stuff, do you charge for that?
Um, we do not, um, but we do tell them we have twenty-four hours to get it. It's a long list of, of stuff. But a lot of our doc, all of our documents are online from the website present. So we refer everyone to our website to do their own research.
Like I said, the check deal I have no problem with, but providing a service, I do have a problem with. That's just me, I'm sorry.
But these are over and above services. I mean, your job is to collect taxes.
Yes.
And obviously, the delinquent fees, I think, need to be in there. I always thought the certificate to move was fifteen dollars, not ten.
It is in most counties.
Oh, okay.
It has always been five dollars for Otero County, which is why we looked at other counties' fees breakdown and we based some of the fee changes off of that. In particular, the permit for the manufactured home movement, that was five, we increased it to ten. So, and then on some of the bottom ones, like the sale preparation fee, the ones for manufactured homes, some of this was with a goal in mind that they will come in and pay their taxes so they don't have to incur those additional fees. Manufactured homes are the hardest to get the taxes from and for a thousand reasons. A lot of things, which I didn't know until recently, um, a lot of the manufactured homeowners, they're so out-of-date, dilapidated, that they have moved those off of their property five, ten-plus years ago. And it just keeps incurring additional fees that they are never going to pay because there is no penalty.
So, I mean, I can, I understand some of that. So this mobile home movement deal, is that a state mandatory deal? Or is that, that's a movement, I'm presuming, a permit or some sticker for that mobile home to hit the street to be moved?
That is what the protocol that we need to follow. However, unlike delinquent houses, which are run by the state, auctions for mobile homes are our domain. So the county has not enforced that, we have a rather large list. I don't, honestly don't know the last time we have auctioned off delinquent mobile homes, but there is this mindset because it hasn't been enforced before, um, and that will change soon. But with these fees, there's going to be more incentive to pay off what is delinquent.
I just, Matt, for example, if you go, if you get a building permit, you have to have a FEMA reporter, it's a flood study done on your application for a permit. The county does that, that's a service the county provides. This, this is where I'm, I'm having a hard time, I mean, yeah, they're all, they're all paying, we have to go kinda above. Matt, they're not really issuing permits or signing off on a permit, but that's still part of the flood zone and all that stuff, so it's part of it. I, like I say, the, the one, their certificate for moving and stuff, I mean, if that's, if that's a requirement for that mobile home to hit the streets, I, I understand. That's, we can't do that, but some of this other stuff, I just, and I don't know how you're gonna fight with the state on some of these mobile homes, because that's a, like, again, D M V deal, I don't know how you, I don't know how you're gonna win that.
Let me just put a lien on it.
Yeah, that is what happens.
It's moneavical rules.
What should we do?
That's easy, that, yeah, so what is a purchase of a tax roll?
So that would be, again, uh, what Selena mentioned, people can pull this information online. But if, if it's a mortgage company or a bank and they're trying to pay the mortgage of their clients, they would rather just send us a spreadsheet of all the account numbers and we would pull that for them rather than them going and doing it. rather than them going and doing it themselves. So, it's a service that they can do, but they are deciding to put that on our staff and hence the fee.
Then definitely, I think that's legit.
Yeah, if they can do it themselves for free, then, but if they want you to spend your time doing it.
In other counties, that price is seventy-five or a hundred dollars additional. We didn't feel like that increase was.
So, what's your plan on where does this money go whenever you receive it?
It would go into a treasurer's fund.
Any other money that comes to the deal goes into the general fund?
Yes, but the momentum that other counties in our affiliate, our treasurer's affiliates, the direction they've been going is setting up these treasurer funds. That way, it can be a separate pool of money that they can use at the treasurer and deputy treasurer's discretion for staff training, bringing additional staffers to events, so there's more flexibility there.
You fixing to open up a whole ball of wax, then the clerk's going to want to open up a clerk fund and...
We have a clerk fund.
Do you? Boy, you blew that little theory right out of the water, huh?
The assessors, we're the only elected office that doesn't have one.
Oh, really? So, R B., when they do a request, any funds that come from information requests, where does it go? They go to the general fund or do they go to attorney fund?
I want an attorney fund too.
So, essentially, it's sort of like how the donations are handled for the animal shelter and the rifle range. Those donations that come into the general fund, however, the amount of the donations that are received are then budgeted so that they can use that money in their expense budget at the rifle range and the animal shelter. So, this would be similar, we could set up a specific line item for, well, actually, we have one for treasurer's fees, I don't know if we needed a separate one, but that money, then, we could look at it monthly or quarterly, and whatever revenue has come in, we're essentially just do an adjustment to the budget to add that to their expense budget so that they could then use those fees.
And Julian, the IPRAs, requests for records, where does that go when we collect?
Request for records?
Does it go to general?
I believe so, yeah, that's what I thought, they're document service fees and, yeah.
And we're estimating five, six thousand dollars a year.
And we don't have a treasure fund, we just have a lawsuit that's all that comes from taxes collected, just for the record. I don't want necessarily filing.
Something else, keep checking.
Commissioners, I have a request that we table this till the August meeting, just so I can get with Carl and Kuya and see what the other counties are doing, because there is a distinction between a IPRA, a document, a records request under IPRA and what you can charge, and then separately, data that you can charge businesses. And I just want to make sure we're on that, because what you can charge for IPRAs, it's basically, it's not, it's not even worth it. That's why we don't charge anything, because we do it all electronically, because it's not worth our time to print the stuff and then charge them to pay for the printing. We'd rather save the trees and time and eat and not deal with that. But I think there is merit in terms of data and selling it, being able to sell it to businesses and using it to fund some of these things that will help train our staff and make them more effective. I just want to make sure that we're on what we can do, because there have been lawsuits on counties charging like forty dollars for a CD or a flash drive, and that being determined excessive on the inspection, the public records side of things. And it's frustrating because, and I know there's some legislative action looking at this, because there are a tremendous amount of personnel hours put towards providing some of these records, and it is kind of essentially an unfunded mandate in ways. So, there has been some discussion at the legislature of looking at compensation for IPRA and just how many personnel hours are spent on it, because, you know, you hire someone such as Jay, who's, should be doing a lot of legal assistance work and helping me, but then all of her time is spent on getting records and providing them. And at that point, she's essentially an IPRA, she's the records custodian, and that's full-time, and she's not able to do the legal duties that she was hired to do. So, you know, at that point, do we hire a separate person to do IPRA, and where does that funding come from?
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk, just to clarify for everyone, the only two items that you could even IPRA on this is the modified tax rule and the tax rule to tax service companies. Everything else is either a bank fee that we could incur, and then tag deliveries and fees for auctions that are delivered. And so, the two tax rule items, they could IPRA that, but we would just tell them, here's the website, you know.
Do it yourself?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. But for a business that's doing something with it, that doesn't make sense for them to do, so they're going to pay.
Yeah.
Well, what I would really like to see before I would agree to this is what the other counties are doing on these items, and if they're charging, and what are they charging? I mean, I, I'm still a firm believer, our duties are to provide a service, that's why they pay property tax. They pay your salary, they pay, well, the state pays that part, but the rest of them, you know, it's...
This is essentially Donna Anna's fee, but everything is reduced in terms of cost, but we're more than happy to print those out.
I have a copy with me, but I only have one copy, I happily email it to everybody.
No doubt, and table this until you have a little more time to investigate.
If the other counties, if it's a legit deal, I'm not saying it's not legit, but what I'm trying to just see is to justify to myself that this isn't just one of our regular duties we should be doing. I'm just looking out for my citizens.
Understood.
And I think, I think it's legit, and operating a business, I'm not saying that we need to make a profit, but we need to recover our expenses. I think as long as it's legal, I would support it, so next month, just to see.
Yeah, if you can get it.
Sure.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to table number thirteen, request approval of resolution number seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-five slash one fourteen dash zero three, a resolution creating a treasurer's fee policy.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, moving on down to number twenty-three, request approval of a contract between the City of Almagordo and Otero County for housing city detainees at the rate of ninety-five dollars per day per detainee.
So, it sounds like a couple of us up here questioning this one.
My math don't add up the same.
You know, I just, I'm not trying to gouge the city, I understand they're a partner of us, but, and I understand the juvenile one, that's four seventy-five now, but any of the adult ones anywhere else, they're all in the two hundreds and stuff, aren't they?
No.
What are they?
Hudson County, seventy-five, Otero prisons, eighty-one seventy, Chavas County, which is about our size, facilities, ninety dollars. Eddie County is a hundred, Lincoln County in our contract, where they're in our facility, ours has a three percent increase every year, so it's...
But when we, we have to take an adult, and we have to send them to Hobbs or wherever we send them, what's the fee? Did you, is that what you just told me?
The housing?
Yeah.
Per day? Every facility, so the more north you go, the more expensive, or the larger the facility, the more expensive.
Why was I thinking it was one eighty, two and a quarter, somewhere in there?
Ours was eighty, and I know it changed to eighty-five, I wasn't in the position I'm in when I went to eighty-five, but it's been a long time since there's been an increase. And I just, because of our mental health, medical, mental health contract increasing, inmate meals, the CPI going up, and certain things, I thought it was time to do an increase on our daily housing. It has not, I would say, I don't know when the city closes.
Twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen.
Yeah, it's been a long time, and I just, I compared some of the facilities that were our price.
I just thought there was a lot of others that were way more.
Santa Fe, the further north you get, Chavas County is pretty comparable to our size, I do think they did have expansion, they're ninety dollars a day. OP is eighty-one seventy, Hudson is seventy-five, and Eddie County is a hundred.
Okay. If that's, I don't know why I was thinking they were just, on the adult part, was quite a bit higher.
A little bit different, I just noticed, like, when me and R B. were talking about the contract, I was like, it's been a long time knowing increase, but yet our costs are increasing, so I needed, you know, I just, I looked in previous, the previous folders, and there was no layout how they did it, I understand what Ms. Burella, she sent me an email, I know where you're coming from, so I tried to, had a quick estimate, because it's a lot of research and a lot of numbers. Twenty-four hours notice? Yeah, it's not going to happen, so, okay, all I can do is compare to the size, facilities that are our size with about the same housing that would supply what we supply, because most people in our vicinity, except Don Anna, their huge facility, and the detainees are charged for co-pays for certain health, and we do submit their insurance if they have Medicaid and/or, there's a lot of processes that you may not know that we do do. They are charged a booking fee. Do they pay it? Well, a lot of them are, no, but when they do get money, it pulls from their, a certain percent from their commissary. So, it does, we get a little bit back, but we do charge them for it. So, this increase, based on your daily average, your monthly average, is only adding thirteen hundred and sixty-eight dollars a month in housing fees. Our raises alone are more than that. That is kind of where I was headed, is our operational expenses and the services that we provide, just like you listed, are not being paid for. You can't get a hotel for ninety-five dollars, and they don't have any services. So, it just seems like we should be able to bill for everything that we provide, especially now that we've increased our security protection and all of that. And I don't want to gouge the city either, but we've got to be reasonable, we can't be in a deficit. Yeah, that's our daily, we increased it, I don't know.
Ninety-five is what Lincoln is charging us.
Hundred and three.
Hundred and three.
Because they have, R B. built in a contract where it's three percent increase for both sides, whether we house their, whoever, because sometimes, due to whatever reasons, they may request someone house their facility, the staff's involved and vice versa. So, there's, the contract's already embedded with the increase in it every year. So, automatically, our agreement with Lincoln County is to go up three percent every year due to whatever cost may increase.
Don't sound like much money.
We're talking about nickels and dimes on this increase, I mean... I think it's eighty-five now, and it's going, I miswrote that on the email, it was eighty, went to eighty-five, and now ninety-five. So, can we change this and add that same verbiage that we use with Lincoln County, that we just automatically increase annually? We could. And...
We would, we would change it, we just have to get the city to agree to it, and they might not agree to it, so.
So, where would they take their prisoners?
I don't know.
They did, in the past, they did house their detainees at Otero Prison, and when they had an officer that used to transport them, but they would initially be arrested and then housed over there. But one thing about the city is, as far as housing, if there's ever someone that's in, has a health issue that is of a high nature, all we have to do is call them and notify, and normally, they'll furlough them so that they're not, we're not using staff to guard them at the hospital or things like that. So, they do work with us with that, so that it doesn't hinder the facility, I can't say that. Whereas, some other amenities, it's a little different, I can't say that, they do, they are cooperative when someone is, has some health issues that are high, chronic health, or acute.
They do a lot of their own transports and stuff, no?
And who pays for that? Well, I would be willing, for the ninety-five, because it's not worth arguing, we need to go at a hundred, a hundred and three, because it's really not enough, but I would be willing to go ninety-five with a five percent increase annually.
I would say we just gather data to support, if you can pull more of what everyone else is charging, and then we can...
Because we bill other agencies as well, they're, like, if they get arrested on one and they're in our facility for a little bit, sometimes it takes a little bit to pick them up from other counties, and they'll be in our facility seven, five days. We do bill other agencies ninety-five, with the exception of Lincoln, due to the increase percentage every year of the contract. So, can we just make that amendment in the contract and then see if Almagordo accepts it? Or do we have to table this to reread the contract?
Can they just make the motion with that amendment?
Yeah.
And then we can see if...
If they don't agree, we'll come back.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to make an amendment to the contract to approve the ninety-five dollars plus a five percent increase annually thereafter for a contract between the City of Almagordo and Otero County for housing city detainees.
I think we need to vote on the amendment first and then vote on the full thing, or can we do it all on?
I think that covers it, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay, all right, then I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. And then, number twenty-nine, request approval of software licensing with Spectrum Technologies for conditional software in the amount of twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars.
Good morning, Madam Chair, good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, I went back when we started with the Microsoft, one of the, one of the things that I wanted to do was wanted, of course, this thing is...
Yeah, you hear that?
Yes, I went far away, usually, we always tell users to put the microphone, but...
It was what, fifty thousand dollars?
So, one of the things I wanted to do is always enhance security, but, and one of the things that I wanted to do is conditional access. So, one of the things that, so, whenever you're in our network, you don't, it doesn't require dual factor, but once you're out there, it's... And when I was looking into this, since we're using Microsoft, just for that service, it needs, it requires licensing. And this year, attending the Tyler Connect and attending our IT affiliate, one of the things that we talked about, Tyler, is adding more features. And right now, when you connect to Tyler, you need a, it requires a VPN connection. So, what we're trying to do is, in order to, for us to make it available, it uses your Microsoft account to authenticate you to access Tyler. So, there's more features, like the mobile app features, and also to approve requisitions outside of, outside of Otero County. But before we make it available, I want to, I want to make sure that that's really, really secure. So, what I want to do is, when you're outside of our network, I want to make sure that you're, it requires dual factor, because if an account gets compromised, like, for example, our finance director, whoever, has a lot of access to Tyler, what I want him to do is to, even if somebody has their password, that it requires that extra layer of authentication so that our munis, before we make it available, I want to make sure that our munis is secure, because right now, it's hosted here, it's self-hosted, so.
So, that dual authentication...
So that dual authentication, they would send it to our cellphone, like a text or something to the cellphone to authorize it to move forward?
Yes, ma'am. And as a matter of fact, that was one of the things, when I went to that, uh, of course, we went to Tyler Connect, and we discussed more features, and also when we went to the IT affiliate, it was a combined, uh, it was a combined affiliate, where one of the meetings was with finance and with IT. And one of the things we're discussing about is conditional access. And one of the IT directors there, and I think he was, I don't remember, was it the finance director that said that they also use this dual factor, that it's more secure? But I know one of the IT directors from there told me that, um, they were using that, and for them, it was working really well. So I was like, that was, when I was truly more convinced about that. Except with Microsoft, it requires licensing, which, yeah.
We've already paid for it.
We, we paid for, like, licenses for email and for, like, our OneDrive and, and for other services, like Teams meetings, so.
Isn't that what this is, is just a different way to access your email?
Uh, well, like, this is for, like, extra, like, for authentication. And first, I was trying to search for that, and apparently it requires a lot, like, a P1 license.
Commissioners, if I could just give you an example of how it's used. And when they came back from the Tyler Connect conference, they talked about the mobile app, which I know several of us was really excited about, because right now, when we work from home or we travel, we can't access Tyler without that VPN connection. However, there's sometimes you're out of the office, like tomorrow, when Roswell all day, and you have to approve a PO or something or the other within Tyler. It would be really nice to do it on your phone, because people back here, when you're at a conference or out of town, are waiting for you to finish that process and approve it. This will give more security and, and no access allowed to our financial data so that we can use these modules, the mobile app and such.
So.
It makes our job easier, and we are more efficient.
So isn't that what Darktrace is supposed to do too?
No, that catches email. This, this is about accessing our finance software outside of our network, because you can't do that without a VPN, and you can't do it at all on a phone.
So right now, when I click on an email and it prompts me for a Microsoft ID, I just click out of it, because I don't have a Microsoft ID for my commissioned email. I click out of it and quit.
I don't know anything about Microsoft ID. I don't get that.
And so, and same with Darktrace. I mean, if I look at it and I don't even think it's legit, I just delete it. I don't even try to open it.
And this is, this is, this is kind of in, in a bit separate from email. This is us working outside of this building, accessing our finance software in that system, separate from email. This is ensuring our data and our finance data is safe.
So every, so you're going to be in Roswell tomorrow. If you have to prove something, it's going to give you.
Unless I take my laptop.
And it's gonna text you, whether it's on a laptop or a phone, it'll text you your security code, you put that in there.
Whatever authentication they build in, I can, I can okay it from my phone.
It's an extra layer of security and access, because like, I think it was yesterday, the Microsoft platform for like SharePoint, which most government agencies are using, was hacked. And so, I may be wrong, but I think this provides, would this be an extra layer of security on top of that, that if we didn't have this, and we just had our sign-on for, for Office 365, and someone went after SharePoint, and they were able to get past that. But with this, it would make an extra wall or layer of security to prevent them from getting to that next point.
Correct. So even if they had your password, and it would require, like, like you said, like, it would send you authentication to your phone, or I think Microsoft has their own authenticator too, so.
And is it annual fee or a one-time fee?
It's an annual fee. It's a license, it's licensing with Microsoft, with their subscription model.
Wendy, did you have your hand up?
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to make a comment on this. As you mentioned earlier today about your VPN, how it's crap, or that's what you have, verbatim.
Did I say that?
This will alleviate that. You'll be able to log in, get into Munis with an authen, they'll send you a code. You get that code and then you log in. We don't have to go through VPN. We don't have to reload the VPN when Microsoft does their updates. I can be in an airport and still approve requisitions instead of having to. Get to where I'm going, check into the hotel, get in my room, and then approve. This would be a lot quicker. Road Shop is always asking, where's my PO? Where's my PO?
Tom.
And I'm just calling him out because he's sitting here.
That's right.
No. But that's what it is. It's more or less to help us do our jobs outside, because even when I'm at home, I get emails or text messages, I need you to approve this. This is an emergency. I have to log into my VPN, log into the VPN again, and then log in Munis. Yes, I can just get on my phone, approve it, and we're done.
So twenty-five thousand dollars a year, and this is the only company that provides this?
I tried to research, and, and the other methods were not very efficient.
Kuya, did you have a question?
I do. So I have Authenticator on my phone for other things that I do, and no matter what, the code sends it to my Authenticator app. And I use my fingerprint, so I don't have to go through the code, not that that's a huge difference. But Authenticator is free, and it's through Microsoft. Is that maybe not compatible with Tyler?
No, it'll use, it'll use Authenticator, but what we want to do is conditional access, because if we start just enable, like, dual factor for everybody, like, even in our network, and there are some people that don't want to use their personal phones and things like that. So the people that are working within the county, they, it doesn't require dual factor authentication, but once you're, but if somebody, if, if we make this, if we make Tyler available outside of our network, that means whoever account gets compromised, like, especially like, like our finance director or any, anybody that has a lot of access to Tyler, that means they'll be able to, if, they'll be able to access the Tyler.
But wouldn't it be realistic just to use, like, what she has for just the people that need it? Like Wendy, like Pam, I mean, we all don't need this. So why can't we just get this two-factor for free? We already paid for the Microsoft licensing way more than that. What is the difference? What is our benefit? I mean, you don't need it, I don't need it, Gerald don't need it, Tom don't need it.
Department head would have to.
Well, so what is that? How many departments is that?
We were discussing the contract, and I was not listening, I apologize.
You know, um, so, let's say fifteen people need it. Is that worth twenty-five thousand dollars a year?
Also on that, it could also be used with the volunteer fire departments up in the mountains, who have issues all the time with VPN. I'd say probably about four times a week, one of those fire departments are coming in because of computer crash, they can't get on the VPN, and IT has to reload it and everything else.
So this two-factor app doesn't talk to a VPN, is that what you're saying?
Correct. You would not have to have the VPN. You would just use this two-factor authenticator, which, then that allows the access to it.
So do you have a VPN for, and do you use this two-factor on this?
No, I use the VPN for Tyler, but also we have our Z Drive office documents that I, if I'm working remotely, I can't access this one as well. I personally haven't had any issues with VPN, but I just use it.
An example of, you know, my grandson was visiting and I was working from home. The first day, I had to get him to approve some POs, had my laptop at home, the VPN didn't work. So I, I think Abe and I spent an hour in a Teams meeting trying to get my VPN to work, while others were waiting for those POs to be approved. And I, I get, it's probably every time I go on vacation with my laptop, I'm calling him to say, it's not working. I can't work.
But this app that is much lower in cost, wouldn't work?
It, it, it'll, like, whenever you do dual factor with Microsoft, it, it allow, um, from, one of the, one of the things that Microsoft has is their authenticator. So, and that one's, of course, that one's free, but to have the conditional access, that one still requires a license from, from Microsoft.
Well, you already have that.
Right now, we don't have, the, those licenses, we don't have them.
Would this, didn't we just approve, like, eighty-five thousand dollars for Microsoft licenses?
Yes, but that was for emails. There's a different license for the Microsoft email compared to what he's trying to get on this.
It's how they do it.
Yes, exactly. It's just like buying a printer. It's really cheap, but when you have to buy the ink cartridges, that's what it is.
Is sure the point of contact with this company, would they be available to hop on virtual and, and answer some questions for the Commissioners about costs and stuff?
I don't know if James Hurst, because he's the one that are.
I can contact him.
Okay. Can we, can we table this for a little while and get through some other stuff, and then see if they're available, if they are, get them on, and ask them specific questions about the number of licenses and what we would actually need and stuff like that.
I feel better about it. I mean, we buy so many technology licenses. We have, just that alone is a million dollars. We're entering into something that's twenty-five thousand dollars a year that's probably going to go up next year. I mean, I just don't, I'm not ready to make that move.
And then one of the things that I learned there at the IT affiliate is that, like, there's some, like, for example, for us in our Microsoft account, we don't, for shared mailboxes, we don't pay for that. But apparently, according to the, the, the IT director from somebody else says, oh, because they use Google. So they're like, we use, we, we pay for our shared mailboxes, I'm like, so, that's a little difference. But it's like, these, these companies, they're, for some services, I would charge, and for some services, they won't charge. But for this one, when I was searching on that, I was like, oh, yeah, you need the licensing for this. So that's what I found out about that, so.
Can you send Abe what you're talking about, so we can see if that's compatible instead?
Okay, so we want to table this one till later today, if we can make contact with.
Later today or next, our next commission meeting's not very far away.
Yeah.
Well, I want to talk to you about that.
No.
And we're gonna have to reschedule for August. I'm going to be gone the seventh and the fourteenth, those two weeks in August.
Maybe you need to stay home.
I'm gonna be in Farmington at the New Mexico Board meeting. Are you guys going up for that?
All right, when you get in your commission discussion, we'll.
We'll do that, okay, okay. Because I know the first two Thursdays are, are out.
Okay, so I make a motion that we table this for the next commission meeting, whenever that's going to be.
Yes, to be TVB.
And I'll go with James and, and somebody from Spectrum too.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Abe.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're gonna take a short break, and we will be right back. Okay, do we have any unscheduled citizens?
He left.
He was the only one?
Yes.
Because I think there's some more names over there.
Yeah.
I just saw him. I didn't.
Is that the one I asked?
Thank you.
Bittersweet, right?
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and Pam and RB and Zoya and.
And everybody.
Um, I I thank you for allowing me this these few minutes, and um it's kind of bittersweet for me. So I'm gonna read this real quick um before I say anything else. It says, blessed is the man who trusts in the Lord and whose hope is in the Lord, for he shall be like a tree planted by the waters, which spread out its roots by the river, and will not fear when heat comes. I'm hearing a lot of heat in here today. But its leaves will be green and will not be anxious in the year of drought, nor will cease from yielding fruit. And I believe that's me as Otero County Probate Judge. That's what I've been doing, um as I have each case, um they coming in and I'm able to help them know that, hey, you can still yield fruit. And that adds to our community in making it better for people to continue on and not not go into depression or whatever else, or suicide, or other things because of a loved one gone.
Would you mind stating your name real quick? Just because we have to have it on the record, sorry.
So um my name is Latonya Boyce, the current Otero County Probate Judge. Thank you. Um, I should have known that, right? So I was appointed in two thousand fifteen, and um I've won each election since that sixteen, eighteen, and twenty-second, which my last term would be next next um year. But because of some things that have come up that I want to step out into, I need to be out of the judicial system. And um I just want you to know that, ooh, you know, I've been here ten years and six months in this position. It's like a glove on me. But uh I wanted to read just a couple of things that the chairman of the affiliate of the um probate judges, and he's also the N M Supreme Court, he, this is what he state. You might have been saying, well, what has she been doing all these ten years, you know, being quiet, right? And um he spoke, he said that um throughout the year, she has consistently proven to be a hard-working, professional judge, always acting in the best interest of the people, and always willing to help the fellow judges. And so I have been involved in the Education Committee, the New Judge Training Committee, the Judicial Wellness Committee, the Legislative Committee. And our manual and all these things were helping the new probate judges that were coming on. Um because when you come on, you don't know too much of anything, and everything changes. And so uh most of these um positions were, the manual hadn't been revised since um two thousand thirteen, the whole manual. And as we know, a lot of Supreme bills and rules have changed. And so that's what we were really working on um the last project that I've been in. And so when I came, when um I came on board, in two thousand fourteen, there was only a hu- a hundred and ninety case files. And then if you go back, two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen, a hundred and thirty-five, thirty-seven. And so that tells you how it has increased even more in our in our um probate counties, thirty-three probate counties. Well, in two thousand fifteen, uh two hundred and thirty-six is what we came with, and then two hundred and twenty-six in two thousand sixteen. Two thousand eighteen, there was two hundred and forty-five. Two thousand twenty, twenty-one, that was during COVID time, we had two hundred and eighty-seven. So the the work had really increased. And I am, I'm thankful that I was able to be approved by the Commissioners for a raise, and then whoever comes in will get that other part of that raise to pull it up because it has really increased, you know? Um, so the other thing that I just wanted to share was, I want to thank you, the county Commissioners. I want to thank Otero County these last ten years. I want to thank our people that as they came in, they trusted that I could direct and tell them how and where to go for what they have to do. I want to thank that whole role there, and even with RB, I would be, I never used you once, but I called, I had to call him to ask him a couple of questions. And so my last swearing in will be on the August um fourth with the nine-one-one um swearing in their dispatchers. And so um I just want to, I wouldn't be able to do this next month. So I just wanted to come and let the city know that it's been a privilege and an honor and a blessing for me to serve as your Otero County Probate Judge.
Well, we think you've done an awesome job, and we hate to see you stepping down, but I know you have big interests on the path, so we're gonna, we're gonna pray into that for you. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you. You have been absolutely the best probate judge and.
That's right, thank you.
How does that work? But like, before you, before you leave, how does that, how does that work? Who appoints your vacancy? Okay, and who?
That's how I came in, was appointed.
I I but you didn't, weren't you appointed through the party and confirmed by the Commission?
We did letters of interest to the public, correct?
We did letters of interest to the public.
Yeah, we we advertised.
And um matter of fact, there was um thirteen interest parties that were, that came um that I had to come against. And um so, yeah, we met right in here, and the Commissioners heard us and and then you voted.
So did it go through the county central first and then to the Commission? Or was it letters of interest only?
It was letters of interest that were brought to the board, and they did interviews in a special meeting.
And then now that probate falls under the district courts, is that different?
Well, we're, I'm still under the county.
Well, and I did ask RB to review what the law or what the rules are, so I can make sure we do it correctly. Because it's been many years, so it may be different now. So we just need to confirm that, and we'll let you know.
And if we're unable to confirm, then we just keep you?
Nice try.
Oh, and I forgot to thank my Otero County person, because the leader is only as good as those that work for, with them and under them. And so I do, for you guys to be here, that is even even more touching. They didn't even know I was doing this today. But I wanted to give you plenty of time so that you could do those letters of interest. And I've had a couple of people approach me who are interested, so.
Great.
I'm trying not to leave you hanging.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you. You have been great to our community.
Cody, Cody Wel- Welter?
Yep.
I couldn't read your last name. Looks like a Z on the end.
I didn't know it was on the tuck.
Oh, you signed in.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just.
Okay, go away. Go back to work. I know, I was like, what am I doing? Okay, Evan Lambert?
Um, I'm up here number thirty-five. I also signed in.
Yeah, he's, he's on the agenda.
They're signing in as attending the meeting.
Oh, okay.
I'm here.
Okay. And Wendy, is she here for, are you here to actually speak? Okay.
The first time I signed in, I was like, oh, I have to speak. But this time, I said, yeah, I'm going to speak. And I spoke last time also. So thank you all for um letting me have a couple minutes of your time. I'm Wendy Arquitas, and I'm with Bridge to Home Alamo. And I spoke a little bit about it last time I was here. Um, we're a nonprofit. At that time, I thought our name was Bridge to Home, but that name was taken by a nonprofit for a shelter for animals. We are not sheltering animals. We are sheltering people and their animals. Um, and I don't want the word Alamo to be deceiving. This shelter would be available for the entire county. Um, our mission is to partner with the housing insecure in Otero County, providing customized temporary shelter options and services. Um, we do have a meeting today at one o'clock at Runner's Refuge, which is six oh one Delaware, and all of you are more than welcome to attend. Um, we'll have snacks and drinks. Um, but we are working with Sacramento Foundations. We're working with a Hundred Percent Otero, with Jen Gruger at the hospital, with Evan, who's here also, um as many organizations as we can incorporate within our community. Um, initially, we were forming a coalition just to get everyone to work together. But there seems to be, there is a strong need for um some people in our community to regain their dignity and have a safe place to sleep at night. Um, so we um possibly have a location at this time, and um we're gonna talk about that today at our meeting. So everyone is welcome to come, and I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that was it. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to new business, number thirty-one, request approval of resolution number seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-five slash one thirteen dash eighty-eight, appointing the members of the Otero County Board of Registration.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Selena Mays, Otero County Clerk. I'm back. Um, so we have to appoint our Board of Registrations. We have to have five people on our board. Two people cannot be the same party. Last time I came, we had selected a Green Party, and you thought maybe Independents, you know, somebody, because they're a larger. Um, so what we usually do is we reach out to the parties. In Otero County, we have a Democratic Party and a Republican Party. They list it. We always ask them to list it, you know, who they want first, second, you know, third. Um, so that's how we came up with those people. Um, so for Independent, we don't have an active party. Um, I reached out to um, what is it, AFP, Americans for Prosperity. They couldn't find anyone either. So what we did is we took everyone that was registered, and we had a phone number for, and we just started calling. So that is our list here. Um, so if you look, we have the two top from the Republican. Um, when the Democrats submitted their names, Tom had changed his party. So you can't have, you couldn't have changed your party within two years prior, and you can't change your party while you're serving on the board. So Tom, so we picked number one and three for them. And then we went with Chad, and then we went with Jane as an alternate, and we picked an alternate for each person.
And I'm not sure how, because.
So it said five?
Yes.
And and two cannot be at the same party?
Right.
Well, that doesn't, doesn't add up.
So I had two Democrats, two Republicans, and then a DTS. And then I have a Democrat for an alternate, a Republican for an alternate.
Okay, so which Democrats are you picking?
Um, Roland and Sue. Roland Cooper and Sue.
Okay, and which Republicans?
William Butler and Elise Borella Corubius.
And Independent would be the only one there is, Chad?
Yeah, so we choose Chad to be on the board, and then we choose Brian Anderson to be the alternate.
Okay, and is there one, more than one alternate?
We have three alternates, one Democrat, one Republican, and one DTS.
Okay.
And I, this is kind of weird for us to vote on this, because I have a relative on there, and so does Commissioner Borella.
So if you look in the resolution, um, I don't know. Because I mean, just the board can't be an elected official um county employee or candidate for a public office. So I would think you guys would be able to vote on it.
Typically, when there's a family member involved, they have to recuse themselves for.
So.
So how would we?
So how about?
Fear of conflict of interest.
How about I vote to make a motion to to approve everybody except for Elise?
That's not the motion on the table, on the agenda. That's what you have to vote on. You can only make one motion to approve and list the names.
Well, they're all, all the names will be as presented.
Yeah. So I don't know, let's, RB has some creative idea.
It's like it's up to you, Gerald.
And it has to be approved in July.
I I figured, yeah.
I I don't have a problem with it, so I can vote.
Yeah, I know you can.
Well, I just went off of how the Democrat and Republican Party listed, I listed their top two. The only one I couldn't do is Tom. So that's why I went with one and three.
We've just got really good Republicans related to us.
I know. I didn't know she was on there till I got this book, so.
I didn't even realize that either. Well, I knew Elise, and she served on our board last time, too.
Yes, yes.
Can I table this one?
Nope.
That's gotta be done.
We'll be back.
You can if you want another meeting.
Yeah, we'll have to work around all these schedules. That's what I was gonna do is.
Lori. I I asked him if we could possibly, because it's still July, could schedule a special meeting for next week with plenty of time, and have three motions, Democratic, one for Independent, and then you can each abstain.
Come on, be here.
Both of ours are on the same party.
I mean, the only other thing, instead of having Lori as our alternate, we could have Susan. And we could change that.
We could do that.
As long as, you know, because they're just an alternate.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yep, I'm okay with that.
So replace Lori Black with Susan Rogers?
We can do that.
That's good.
We're gonna replace Lori Black with Susan Rogers, and then that way I can vote on on both.
Perfect.
Does that work? Okay, let's do that.
Is she in agreement with that?
She will be.
Oh, is that how that works?
Yeah, no, I'm serious. I think she'll be fine with that.
Yeah.
Derek, I feel strong. The two people that are on the board will be there.
Yeah. Okay, so I make a motion to approve, uh, for the approval of resolution number zero seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-five slash one thirteen dash eighty-eight, appointing the members of the Otero County Board of Registration to include Roland Cooper, William Butler, Sue Pressler, Elise Corubius, Chad Weaver, Joy Ordinave, I don't know how to say that, Susan Rogers, and Brian Anderson.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you so much, Commissioners.
Look at us figuring that out. Okay, number thirty-two, request approval of resolution number seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-five slash one fourteen dash zero one, FY twenty twenty-six, final budget.
Well, Commissioners, the final budget is, has been uploaded into the LGDMS software for DFA. Everything is balanced. And unless you have any additional changes for me to make, um, and I have time to do that, because it's not due until the thirty-first, then um if you have any questions or any changes.
I wanted to put forward that I would like to have the pay increase for RB and Pamela included in that, because we had thought we would do that at their contract.
Okay.
Negotiation time, and that's not the way it is. So if you were in agreement with that.
Oh, I don't have a problem with that. But that shouldn't be the way that operates. It's, those negotiations should be in a private deal, my ide- my deal. Now, I say put them in, but I I think it should be on the next one. Well, if you do an increase next year, you you're not available for three years. Right?
Well, I'm not renegotiating. I mean, it can be opened up for negotiation, but the Commission has always set it within budget. If it's the desire of the board to do it at a separate time, we can do it that way. It's just always been standard procedure that your two employees get pay raises or colas and negotiate that during budget.
Yeah, it's, whatever's gonna be the best way, I, that's fine.
The only issue is that um Pamela had negotiated hers with you.
Just a few months ago.
And so it's already done. Mine, I have to do with you, uh, so.
But see, what I don't want is, we give you a raise now, and then your your contract comes up this year, and then you come back and say, well, I want ten more percent. That's not where I want to do this. This, where I want to do it is all at one time. Not now.
Yeah, yeah. No, that makes sense. But the only problem is that hers was done without that.
And I understand that. To accommodate her, I I'm I'm for it. But I don't think that should how it be done.
And and to correct it, you could leave me out of it, and then we can do mine when we.
No, I'm gonna put you in it, because that way we're done with it. We don't have to. There ain't gonna be no more ten percent or.
That's the way that works. That's the way that works.
Because I see that coming, so. I'm not saying that meanly. I just, it could happen.
I agree. I'm just gonna say that.
Okay, okay, all right.
But wait, wait, wait. So um I just want to make sure. So um last year, we put in five hundred thousand dollars for housing. And Juliana and I were talking, because we couldn't afford to do the five hundred thousand dollars again this year in order to work for that project. So um there is one and a half million dollars in opioid money that we have that has not been designated.
In what money?
Opioid. The money that comes in from the opioid settlements.
Yeah.
Um, I would like to give that five hundred thousand dollars back to the general fund and reserve that one and a half million dollars opioid money in lieu of the project, that the how, the mentally ill project or whatever. And just so everybody knows, um I have been in contact with the Lincoln County Commission, too, and I think they're gonna be asking for the same thing, so we can hold our opioid. be asking for the same thing so we can hold our opioid money until we can move further, further with the court systems and see what, what we can do as a joint county.
That would be great.
But just so we could just hold it, there's the five hundred thousand back. So we're actually gaining a little bit towards the budget and reserving, locking this up.
What, what, um, would the use of the opioid money be?
So, um, I took a tour to Kamala's house with the, with the judges and everybody. And so for our own, um, mental illness facility, recovery facility, in lieu of putting them in jail, we actually have a facility to put them in. Um, mirroring that, if not gonna be like the Kamala's house, we'll never be there. But, um, to actually have a facility that helps people or has a place for them to go if we can't help them. Initially, I thought that, um, it'd be a bigger project that we could expand to and house for other counties. But I think just having it because we're sharing the judicial district, just joining with their commission and doing it here, I think is our goal. And three million dollars plus whatever the courts provide, uh, and then the implement of the policies, I think, I think we can get it done.
That would be great.
Is that, can you legally, is that money is still the same kind of money?
We are allowed to use it for the recovery and the mental illness and all of that for this. Yes.
Hope it's legal.
So, and the use of those funds is very, um, specific. Um, I would have to confirm that, um, or we, it would just, um, we would have to confirm that those, that that would apply. We would have, uh, it would, we'd have to tailor it.
Yep, I, from what I'm reading, if both of us put in a million and a half each, we're allowed to build a facility with that money. And then with the court's money that they put in would actually be the, the policies, the employment, the, the running of the facility kind of thing. That's, that's the way I read it. So, is that okay?
Well, I think it, I, I think right now putting that five hundred thousand back is fine. Um, you will have to have a motion on the table, a formal action to spend that money in that project. So he can just confirm that that money can be spent for that in the meantime. And then when, when we know that and we bring it all together, you can formally vote to spend that money that way.
Okay.
So you're gonna, we're gonna have another meeting on the budget?
No, this, this will be later when we know you can spend that money in the project. The money is there. It's available to be used, so, uh, we don't have any other purpose to use it right now. So, um, I don't think there's any risk of it suddenly going away. It won't. None of it will be spent without your approval.
Okay. Okay, so that five hundred going back and that one point five, we're just gonna earmark until we move further on this project.
Okay. Do we need to add that in this motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I make a motion for the approval of resolution number zero seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-five slash one fourteen dash zero-one, FY 2026 final budget with the amendment of adding RB Nichols and Pamela Heltner's raise that they requested, removing the five hundred thousand dollars out of the housing fund that we had, put it back in the general fund, and earmark, mark the one point five million opioid money to the housing fund.
He mentally ill, yeah. Recovery, yeah.
Want to second it?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number thirty-three, discuss and consider approval of resolution number zero seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-five slash one fourteen dash zero-five, participation in transportation project fund program administered by the New Mexico Department of Transportation. First Amendment in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand with a five percent, twelve thousand five hundred dollar match.
Commissioners, I just got an email from DOT. It confirmed this project is closed and this is no longer needed.
Okay.
So if you could skip it.
Okay.
Good, because I had a question, but now we don't have to.
It's done.
So we're just taking this off completely? Okay.
Okay.
All right. Number thirty-four, discuss and consider approving a housing tax abatement as requested by Mr. Eddie Valencia. The name's wrong on here. It's Valencia, not...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
How are you?
Pretty good, you man.
Good.
I just texted that attorney, Abe, for the schools. I, I don't know. I just literally texted her that... Is that her? She's been listening the whole meeting.
Oh, there you go.
Ready?
We're ready.
Well, first of all, thank you for the opportunity for presenting this morning. Um, I have been working on this project now for three years, okay? Uh, it's been, uh, quite a journey. It was a little difficult to, to get an approval, uh, from the Department of Housing, okay? Because, uh, in the last project, the last apartment project built in Almagordo was twenty-five years ago. So I had a very difficult time trying to find comparables for this area. And finally, I got HUD to allow me to use, uh, some of the local areas. For example, we built one in Sunland Park. We were able to use some comps in, uh, even as far as El Paso. Uh, just, just to get an idea of, you know, the, uh, the comps that could, you know, potentially, uh, be used for, for, for this project. So I'd like to give you an overview of the project with the presentation that I've done so you can kind of get the history behind it. Uh, it was quite a challenge. Originally, we were coming in trying to present a garden-style apartment project, but then we had to move back and scale it back, uh, because of the comps, first of all, and second, because the rents were very low at the time. Uh, the demand is, is, is here. We've spent a lot of money in market studies and, uh, appraisals and, and all of the, uh, application process for HUD, the Department of Housing. So first, I'd, I'd like to give you, um, is everybody here familiar with the two twenty-one D four program under HUD? No? Okay, wha, what it is, is it's, it's a loan from the Department of Housing. Not, not per se a loan, but what, what HUD does is insu, it ensures the loan. So when the lender goes, let's say, to Wall Street to find the money, the Department of Housing, the, the federal government, ensures me as a developer and says, if I fail, HUD will pick it up and pay it off. Okay? It's a non-guarantee loan. Uh, it's a fixed interest rate for forty years. Okay? Uh, what else is, is good about it? Um, it's an assumable loan to another, to other developers, assuming I decide to sell it or somebody's interested in buying it. Okay? It's, it's a very attractive loan for anybody. So, so basically, the, the fact that the federal government is insuring it, there's basically no risk for, for the people, the people that loaned the money to put up the money because they know it's, it's a guaranteed loan. Okay? If, if you don't mind, we'll start with the Patriot Point, the, the presentation. So we came up with a, with the name Patriot Point, obviously because we're catering to the military to Holloman Air Force Base. Okay? I, I think I've kind of given you, uh, the introduction as topic one. Uh, Patriot, Patriot Point Apartments LLC will be the asset that owns the project. And then we'll go over the timeline, the market analysis, the developer requests, some of the challenges we have on the project, and then I'll take questions. I don't need to do this. I mean, you guys know, um, basically what your economic drivers are here. Obviously, Holloman is a big part of that. And, uh, all the different things that are coming in to the Air Force Base that, uh, that is driving some of the demand for the housing. And, uh, some of the, um, I guess the new test track that they're developing, all, all of the different components that that brings to the, to the city. Uh, according to my last analysis, the population here is approximately thirty-three thousand people. Who we are, uh, again, Patriot Point Apartments LLC will be the owner of the asset. It is a New Mexico li, limited liability company. Ecom Construction Development Services, uh, is owned by the same partnership that is gonna own the apartments. And we are licensed in New Mexico to build. Uh, we have a GB ninety-eight license. These are some of the projects that we've been involved in over the years, multi-housing projects. The most recent one, the Reserve Townhomes in Sunland Park. If you would do me a favor and, and click on that one, kind of want to give you a little overview of what the project is gonna look like. It's, it's basically the same footprint with the exception that it's gonna have a lot more amenities than this one does. And you all are welcome to stop by and visit it. If you go into the website, it'll, it'll give you, you know, what the units will look like, uh, backyard space, kitchen. This one is, is right at the border of, uh, Sunland Park and San Antonio. And please, if you guys have any questions, you know, as I'm going along, let me know. Okay? Okay, um... These are some of the other, the other projects. Again, we, uh, we've been involved in Carlsbad, Hobbs, uh, Levington, and Artesia. Currently, right now, I'm involved in a project where we're building a United Supermarkets in Levington, New Mexico. We're also developing a shopping center, Wendy's, uh, and then we did some multifamily projects there as well. Again, the, the amenities for this particular project, gated community, covered parking, clubhouse, party room, uh, large gym, business center, swimming pool, volleyball courts, children's playground, barbecue areas, and, uh, and a pavilion. The units will have washer and dryer and will have high-speed internet. This is a site plan of what, uh, the actual site will look. It'll have two points of access, one on Mungo Street and the other one off of Fourth Street. Um, there is several apartment complexes in the area, but I believe some of them are, are city housing behind us. And then to the side, there's a, uh, I think it's a restricted age community center. Total, total units is a hundred and fourteen units, uh, two-bedroom, two-bath, and one-bedroom, one-bath. And then I believe there's five handicap units in the mix. Here's the timeline. Started in May of twenty twenty-two, and I won't, I won't bore you with all the details, but it was quite a, quite a journey. We, we ended up having to redesign the site, uh, having to go back and then apply for, uh, through the Department of Housing to get the two twenty-one D four. The two twenty-one D four in and of itself takes about a year to get approved. From the time that I submit an application, time we go through the process, we, we do, we do everything else. Uh, currently, we have a, we have a firm commitment from HUD. Uh, and then, uh, my, my due date, my deadline is December fifteenth, okay? To, to basically close the loan, uh, and get, you know, get everything done. Right now, we're in the middle of pricing. We've got a lot of bids in. There's a lot of people that are applying, even local. A lot of local contractors have submitted their bids, uh, for the project. And then, um, once, we're, we're in that sixty-day period from the, from the date of, uh, I received the, the commitment, I believe, in July. No, we're in July. We received it in June. So we're in that sixty-day, uh, period, and then we have a hundred and twenty days to close. Basically, um, um, I'm, I've got my eyes set on the December fifteenth deadline. Okay?
That's gonna take you eighteen months to build the entire facility?
Well, yes, it, we, we, we always get eighteen months for the unknown, right? But, but we phase it in. In other words, as, as we're building, uh, buildings, we start leasing up. You know, we, we, we have a schedule of buildings lined up. And then, you know, we, we start leasing. Let's say we got two or three ready to go. We get certificates of occupancy from the, the fire department, then we turn them over. But, but to answer your question, yes, eighteen months.
That is like supersonic speed compared to the government.
Yeah.
I just want you to know that. That's great.
Well, HUD, you know, HUD keeps us on a very strict, uh, timeline. And then they've got, uh, you know, we have multiple inspections. Uh, the HUD inspector flies in, one unannounced visit and one unannounced visit every month. So we have to be on, on time. The market analysis, HUD meant demand at the end of three-year development period, two hundred and thirty-seven units up from two hundred and twenty-eight, uh, at the end of the May twenty twenty-fourth market study. Overall vacancy, point five percent. And then on a, on a B, it looks like about four percent. Hunter's Ridge has a waitlist of seventy applicants, uh, up from fifty applicants in May of twenty twenty-four. Las Vental, Las Ventanas still has an undisclosed waitlist, but they didn't want to give us any information. Will Springs, twenty-five applicants on the waiting list. And then most comparable project in the PMA is gonna be Las Ventanas. Uh, average is about a hundred and twenty-one dollars per uh, that should be a, a dollar twenty-one a square foot. Okay? Monte Vista Townhomes went up fifty, fifty-five dollars per unit. Uh, Otero increased a hundred dollars, uh, to fifteen dollars per unit. And then you see the other increases on Juniper, Desert Mountain, and then the Alamo Ranch. Nobody was offering any concessions at the time of the study, which, which, uh, was done in May of twenty twenty-four. And then it was updated in May of twenty twenty-five. Basically, the market is very strong here. Uh, that's why HUD basically approved the project. My, my challenge was to show them that the city of Almagordo could absorb the number of units we were bringing in. HUD did not want to see any numbers related to the military. Okay? They, they don't, they do not, um, look at military numbers simply because at any time, a base can close. And then the city is the one really, city and county are the ones that really, uh, you know, have to prove up what, what the demand is for housing. Okay? Currently, according to CoStar, market is ninety percent occupied across all properties. Average rents, a dollar twenty-three a square foot, an increase of six point nine. Rents have increased an average of four point seven annually since twenty fifteen. The absorption is limited to lack of new deliveries in the market. Again, the last one that was built was in nineteen ninety-nine. If you'll click on the little key up there. So, he, here is all the data and numbers. They're the kind of very small numbers. You're not gonna be able to see them, but this is basically the income summary. This is what, what, uh, HUD reviews and they look at rents, the income, operating cost versus the debt service and property taxes, insurance, and then how the, the money is utilized. Because, uh, uh, under this program, we get audited twice a year, the beginning of the year and mid-year. Okay. This is the actual commitment letter that was issued by the Department of Housing. Once we have this federal number, that's basically the approval from, from HUD, uh, and a commitment for insurance, uh, for the loan. We were approved for twenty-one million, I can't see the number, but twenty-one million-two to build this project. Total cost on this project is gonna be roughly about twenty-three million dollars. Okay. Here, my request, uh, uh, one of, one of the biggest challenges that I have right now in pricing the project is the tariffs. Okay? Uh, we're getting hit with tariffs for appliances, for lighting, um, steel, lumber, Canada's up and down, you know, there's, there's really a lot of uncertainty in the market on our pricing. So that, that's one of our biggest challenges. But, uh, what we're asking for is, uh, a tax abatement, you know, for, for ten years while we're in operation, the, the first ten years. And then, um, a dedication of infrastructure, water and sewer lines. I, I believe that's more in line with the city, infrastructure, perimeter sidewalks and utility tap connections, uh, that are basically on the city right-of-way. Uh, we're not asking for anything inside the property line. The perimeter sidewalks are on the city right-of-way. And then the, uh, utility taps and the infrastructure is all basically city right-of-way. Uh, again, the, the, the project challenges, the, the usable comps for this project, last one built twenty years ago. Initially, when we started, the rents were very low, but, but gradually, they've been coming up. I, I, I attribute that to demand. Uh, some of the, the supply chain shortages, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, appliances, uh, siding and wood products. And then cost of inflation, cost of materials, labor shortages, higher wages, New Mexico GRT tax, and then travel to Alamo Gordo. Um, while we have a lot of subs that are, a lot of contractors that are, uh, submitting bids, it, it's only, mo- most of the bids that I've seen coming, coming out of Alamo Gordo is for dirt paving, you know, uh, concrete. I believe Mesa Verde has a, has a large plant here. Um, but some of the other trades, I haven't seen very many. I don't know if it's attributed to the fact that we'll, we, we have to do certified payrolls and we do have to follow the Davis Bacon Wage Act. So sometimes some subs shy away from those because of all the requirements that, that HUD imposes. Uh, again, just, I wanna thank you for the opportunity for presenting the project. I, I can answer any questions that you all may have. Um, I think it's a very important project to both the county and the city. And, um, you know, I'm just appreciative of any, any, um, consideration you, you give us. Uh, you know, obviously, we're, we're ready to go. I'm still faced with some challenges on pricing, on, on finalizing the project here in the next coming months. Uh, and hopefully, we can get it off the ground before the end of the year.
So, um, when I seen this housing presentation, um, they also had a presentation with Holloman Air Force Base with the projected five years of their projects and what we can expect in, in airmen and families that need to be housed. And it was an, it, I, even with this project, it's still gonna be a deficit of, think of like nine-hundred homes. Um, so, um, Holloman would actually use part of this data for us to be able to get more jobs, more airmen here too. And I seen the immediate importance of being able to help in this. But, so I wanna make, I know that you mentioned that we're not allowed to use Holloman as part of, of the consideration because of HUD, but literally, it is, that's one of the reasons.
Right.
And they're gonna come with families, they're gonna come bring other friends and family and we're just gonna grow from there. We can, cannot not consider.
Mm-hmm.
This is an option, so that's why I asked for both our assessor and our treasurers to be here, um, too, so I can see what the actual cost outlooks of the abatement is. Cause we, I've never been a part of any of that before, so I don't know what it looks like. So I think, and I, and I, we also have the attorney for the Alamo Gordo Public Schools on here too, because they're gonna have a direct impact on these taxes. So that's, I just tried to pull in everybody that's affected and, so you guys tell, tell us what we're up against, cause I can't, I don't understand what you sent, James.
Well, I mean, I, I remember Mr. Valencia came three years ago.
James, would you come up to the microphone?
Sure. Uh, yeah, so, um, I remember when Mr. Valencia came in about three years ago and he had the same presentation, uh, at the Chamber of Commerce and, and basically like from my office, we, I think originally, we had talked about it and I think it was gonna be something like, it was gonna be on a IRB for like three to five years. Our office, we don't make that determination, that's basically determined by the people that have to make those decisions, you know, city, county, things like that. Um, all we can basically provide is like what that property valuation was at right now, uh, currently, as it sits as a vacant lot. Um, as far as like what the overall valuation will be, we really can't determine that until the project is actually completed. So, you know, we can, you know, once it's all done, I can say, hey, this is the value of this property and we can show basically what taxes are going to, like what the taxes are gonna be exempt from the property for that. Um, but whenever there's IRB in place, we basically, again, we kinda report this is what it should be, but we're not collecting on those taxes in that form at that time. And all we do is we just kind of maintain and understand, you know, if it's a ten-year IRB, we basically say, hey, here's your one, we press go and ten years later, we take it off. Um, as in accordance to whatever is written in the, the agreement and everything with the city and the county and whoever else makes that, uh, decision. So, um, yeah, I mean, I, I, whenever, I saw the presentation three years ago, I, I loved it, you know? I, I understand the importance of having, uh, these types of things. And I tried helping with finding comparables and he was right, I mean, we don't have anything this size. We don't have anything that's sold in this size, so it was very difficult. Uh, we did, at the time, we actually cleaned up Las Ventanas apartments and we kinda did a revaluation of that just so we can kinda give Mr. Valencia a better understanding of like, this is what we currently have it valued at. Um, I do know over the last couple of years, they've done few upgrades to their property. I know that they, I wanna say they went to like all keyless entry. So they have like, I think they all have ring doorbells on their apartments now. I think they all have, uh, you know, the keypads and stuff like that, so they don't have to reissue keys, which makes a lot of sense in my mind for apartment complexes. Um, I mean, cause you're seeing that with a lot of like, you know, Airbnbs and stuff like that too. It's easy to just go change a code or delete a code. So they went to things like that, um, but still in my mind, for what Alamo Gordo has, we all know there's nothing that really compares to what this project will bring to the county and to the city, so. Um, yeah, I mean, like I said, we, we kinda do our stuff on the backend of it all. Um, we just put together some quick numbers and things like that, just to kinda show you again, this is what it currently sits at. Um, we did a analysis on non-residential ad as well as residential, um, classification, which this would actually fall on a residential classification, so you can take the non-residential one and, you know, push that one aside because that, those numbers don't really, uh, affect this because we would have it classified under residential. So, yeah.
So right now, as it sits bare land, we collect eighteen hundred dollars a year.
Right.
Right? And so hypothetically, with a five-year tax abatement, that's nine thousand dollars.
Give or take, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I interrupt something?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, so part of the underwriting that, that HUD has to do, um, well, actually, our lender has to do to present HUD is evaluation of the project. So our project, in order to get approved for twenty-one million dollars, we had to, we had to hire a firm to do a market appraisal on the project to give us a valuation of the project. So to just, just to give you an idea, we, we actually assessed it and on value, on what we got backed on the appraisal and then the market. And then HUD will review those numbers and they will, they, they will also look at your, your taxing valuation and your breakdown, right, from city, county, schools, everybody who's involved. And then that's how we determine a value. So right now, roughly, the, the property taxes on a project that size are gonna be about a hundred and, somewhere between a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. Okay? Um, I, I, I don't know if I'm within limits, but, but that's what the, the appraisal. And I'm, I'm happy to share that appraisal with you all. And, and, and so you can review the actual valuation that was done by the underwriting by HUD and the appraiser for the, for the, for the project.
So the way I see this right now, we're really not collecting a lot of money on that empty lot. So they're, we're really not taking money away that they're depending on. So it's just like a delayed payment. So whether we do it five years, ten years down the road, then they're gonna start seeing a real benefit from this.
Exactly.
And it's a huge benefit for our community, so I'm for this one hundred percent.
Okay, but I got more questions.
Okay.
So, so, um, it was my understanding, and I can't remember if Carl told me or James told me this, but in an abatement that the county could be responsible to make that tax payment instead of to cer- certain entities? Did we do any research into that?
I did not, that was a speculation I made if, for instance, the school district in that zone didn't agree to this or the city didn't agree to this and they still have a kind of property taxes that they would no longer get.
So if we were to agree to this today, and then who goes to the schools meeting to get them to agree? And who goes to the cities meeting to get them agreed so that the county is not out of pocket?
We, uh, the problem is we, we can't, um, agree, we can't abate taxes other than like a very few mechanisms. Like we, we don't have the authority to, to just say this, this project is great and we need it, which it is and we need it. Um, we can't do that. Really, as far as I can see, the, the main way it could be done is an industrial revenue bond, um, which we couldn't decide on today. And, um, those are not simple, I mean, the, the size of the, um, resolution and stuff you, um, approved today. And there may need to be some city approval on it, cause it's in the city. And, um, the city opted not to do an industrial revenue bond because, um, and this, I don't know this for certain, but it's, what I was told is that they didn't agree or their legal counsel did not agree that a, um, a housing apartment complex qualified under the industrial revenue bond authorized uses. Um, there was a law firm, um, that I think was representing, um, Patriot Homes that, uh, did feel that and, um, I, I tended to agree that way. But, uh, the reason that we're, where we're at right now is cause the city disagreed and opted not to do it. It's really, it should be coming from the city. We may still be able to do it, but we would, we would have to enlist our bond counsel to really, um, do the due diligence and go through the details of how that could work.
So when we make a decision to go with an IRB bond, then it automatically just agree that city and the schools, everybody affected, just, okay, they agree with it? That's the difference?
Uh, the, the, the schools don't have to agree, they're just along for the ride. Well, and, and with energy ones, they're along for the ride and definitely getting, uh, a specific amount allocated to the non-energy producing or, or electric, solar-related projects are a little bit different in, in how they go. Um, I don't know if we could approve an IRB on a project that is in the city limits, um, without the city's participation and cooperation.
So then, and that's what I was thinking, and plus the length of time, um, to present to IRB, could we get it done in time for them? But if we were just to agree on a tax abatement, what would that look like?
Uh, we, we, we can't, we don't have that discretion.
So we have no choice but to go through IRB?
And LIDA could be a possibility, there is, um, uh, something called a, um, a, um, a tax increment financing, um, but that, that falls establishing a district and, um, and then the, and a tax levy, I think, on the other properties within it to cover it. And then that can be rescinded by voters. It's not simple. Ideally, we could just say, you know, we're responsible for collecting property taxes. We determine, uh, that this project is, is needed and beneficial, so we're not gonna charge property tax as an incentive. But that is not in the statutes for us to be able to do that I'm aware of and I've seen. You know, if the public schools, um, council, um, has any insight or info, I would love to hear it.
Is she still there?
So what are you telling our options on?
And then the issue with the, um, revenue bond, that at least as I'm seeing it, it would need to, um, I mostly target low-income households and, um, s- service those earning sixty percent or less of the area median income, which is fifty-eight, fifty-nine thousand approximately. So I don't know if that is going to marry up with, um, the development's intentions and, and needs.
This was targeted for low income because of basically airmen's income, right?
I wouldn't be able to answer that question based on whatever the, the BHC is at right now. Um, but, but I will tell you that, uh, when we came in, uh, the Rodei Law Firm came in and, uh, they do this throughout the, my understanding is they do it throughout the, the state of New Mexico, right? Um, my understanding is the industrial revenue bonds are very specific in what they allow, right? So that was one of the reasons why maybe the city just didn't think it, it could be done. Um, however, I will tell you that, you know, you, you asked a question about how, in other words, um, how it could be broken down, you know, county, city. So sometimes the abatement comes in the form of only the, if the county will do their part, only the city will approve. Then maybe the hospital or one of the other entities or the school district may say no. And then you get a percentage of the abatement. So it's not a hundred percent, but it could be, you know, fifty or forty or, you know, whatever that number comes out to be, once you all determine how you would wanna, uh, pursue it. Uh, because for example, the Housing Finance Authority, um, you know, PASO does a lot of that and they waive the property taxes. But then you've gotta conform to the AMI based on income restrictions, family size, rents and all of that.
You did other projects around the state. What did those counties, did those counties contribute to your program? You, you, Lovington, you did what, Santa Teresa, you did something, you, so? You, you, Lovington, you did what, Santa Teresa, you did something, you, so, what, what did the others do, and how did they do it?
Yeah, I'll give you an example, for example, the city of Lovington, uh, the Economic Development Board, uh, did a rebate per door, um, we had to put up the money first, we had to get a certificate of occupants, occupancy, we, we, you know, basically had to do everything, and then once it was done, they were able to, to provide that incentive through a rebate, okay? Um, to be honest with you, I've never done a property tax abatement, this would be the fir- very first time that I'm asking for it, um, you know, the, some of the other, um, cities in New Mexico have done very similar things through their economic development board, through the EDC, um, you know, for example, uh, the project that we're doing right now in Lovington, where, uh, they brought in United Supermarkets and all that, there needed to be highway improvements, uh, through New Mexico DOT, and they were able to provide funding for that through some other fund or something, so, I mean, I mean, there, there are ways of doing it, it just depends on how you all see fit on doing it, and what you're willing to do, you know, obviously, within the law or what the requirements are.
And I, I heard that presentation too, about the, the rebate per door, once it was occupied, they got a thousand dollars per door, I think, is what, is what that presentation was.
Yeah, it was a little bit more, I'd, uh, I'm gonna say it was about two thousand dollars.
Per door, which would be more expensive for us to do it that way, at a hundred and fourteen doors, than in lieu of taxes. So, what you're saying is that, basically, starting tax year of, let's see, whenever the property values reassessed next year, it'll be twenty-three million dollars assessed, even though it's still in construction, because of the HUD requirements?
No, no, it, it'll be whatever the, the taxing authority.
Yeah, when we do ours, it's based on the time of the visit, so whatever we see at the time of the visit, so we might, so what I've done in the past with, you know, it's, it's, it's obviously easier with, like, housing, instead of, you know, a, a large structure like this, is I'll find out, I'll run market analysis, and I'll find comparable sales, and I'll figure out what is this property possibility gonna be valued at, and then I put it at a percentage based off of that, so, you know, if I feel like it's gonna be at three hundred thousand dollars, I might put it at ten percent complete, so it's gonna show and post that value at the time, so it's not giving them a full, what we would call, like, a tax lightning, to what the full value is until it's actually complete. So, that would be something that we would do on a project of this size, we wouldn't even attempt to anticipate what it would be, 'cause again, a lot of people would say, ooh, twenty-three million dollars, that's what they're spending, and that's what it should be worth, that's not the way that we do it, so, it would be for us, we probably wouldn't even start looking at it until it's at close to, like, ninety percent complete, because we know we'd have to revisit it again the next year anyway, so it's kinda like, why do that, whenever we have all the other things we need to do, we can just kinda tackle it as getting closer to being completed.
So, what is the best way to support this project and get it done? 'Cause it sounds like just an abatement is out of the question, and IRB, I don't think we have enough time for, so, how do we make it happen?
Looking at RB.
He's reading about it.
I know, he was.
Um, what's your experience with LIDA?
We've only done one LIDA project, and that was at the Fluke and Church Center. Um, we did, did involve an ordinance, um, they had to do specific reporting to us, to the state, but it was a small project, it was like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it was for their movie screen, their equipment, so we don't have much experience with LIDA.
So, the abatement that we're considering for five years costs us what? What, what is this forty-two hundred dollar number?
You said it was like nine thousand, or was what, is currently being paid on that?
Eighteen hundred.
Or eighteen hundred, so, say, the first two years, like, is it supposed to be complete and up and running in, in two years, is, is that correct, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, you know, if it, the first two years would be thirty-six hundred, and then at that point, um, I think you said it was a hundred thousand approximately a year after that, or, or, with the full valuation, it's gonna be?
Correct, the, the assessed value that, uh, you know, the, the appraisal budget, right, and that's what HUD goes by, is it, they, the, the project in and of itself gets a piece, land and construction, so you get an appraised value on the entire, on the entire project, and then they look at that, and then they, they look at your valuation methods, whatever you have online, for property taxes, and then they give it the value, and then they break it down. In my, in my estimated expenses through the HUD approval, I believe the, the property taxes were at a hundred and twelve thousand dollars a year, once the project is complete up and running.
So, like, talking like three hundred thousand approximately?
Yes.
That would be, um, that is, the ask is, is the abatement of approximately three hundred thousand, would you agree with that?
Um, over how many years?
Five years.
Five years? Yeah, roughly.
RB, there's no laws where you can go through infrastructure incentive program where you could do? Is that, I don't know who that is up there.
We can't hear you.
Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, I just didn't wanna, I did not wanna speak out of turn, I, that, that was, that was my question in terms of, um, usually, when some sort of tax abatement is considered, regardless of the method that's being used, whether it's going to be IRB or straight tax abatement, or some other method that we have available to us, it's because we're getting, um, as governmental entities, something in return, for example, um, if a developer is going to provide infrastructure improvements, then we can provide, then governmental entities can provide impact fee credits, um, as opposed to taking a straight, um, property tax, uh, revenue loss. My concern as, I should stand on, I represent, um, Alaboro Public Schools, is that the amount of time that you are asking for as a developer, I can understand for your perspective, the return that you would like to see on your investment, but if it's going to indeed be bringing in families and students from those families who are going to be attending our schools, we are going to need the, the funds to be able to appropriately support those kids, and we, um, as stakeholders in this, rely heavily on our, our revenue that we receive through the county and, and property taxes, and so if, if children are going to be living in those, um, in, in that housing, and we're going to be educating them, a ten-year, uh, look-forward period is, um, is a substantial amount of time in order to, to have, to not have the revenue that would normally come from the families living in those houses.
And, and I mean, um, you know, my, my, I, I know I'm asking for ten years, but really, ultimately, the decision is yours, you know, if you give me five, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with five, you know, whatever, whatever makes it work, right? Uh, the importance of, of, uh, you guys giving me something right now is that it, it, uh, increases the, the loan amount, okay? Because I'm, I'm already looking at cost overruns based on the, on the current situation right now with the tariffs and materials pricing, and, and all of the uncertainty going on right now, right? Um, uh, obviously, I'm gonna re, in a way, I'll, I'll recuperate that over, let's say, you give me five years, you know, it, it'll be a return on investment that way.
I'm sorry, I can't remember your name with the schools, um, but have you ever been involved in an abatement discuss- discussion like this before that was not an IRB?
Are you asking me, Dawn?
Yes.
No, I've, I've not been in a tax abatement discussion, like, a straight tax abatement discussion, it's usually been through some other means.
So, five years, um, it, it is about three hundred and ten thousand dollars, so...
How did you get that?
What's three oh three, then they changed the number, so I'm just at, averaging it up, I did it at, um, two years at the eighteen hundred, and then three, a hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, you did the, oh, I gotcha, 'cause I did the five, the full five at a hundred and twelve.
And then they said it would be about a hundred and twelve thousand, so it's gonna be, you know, a little bit more than that.
I gotcha.
But, that's how I, my math, but, so, how do we make it happen?
LIDA is a possibility, I don't know the exact benefits, um, how it would work, but, but that would be, that has to go through the state first, and then...
They have to apply with the state first, then the state brings it to us, pass an ordinance.
And it's gonna take six months, and then it's done.
Yeah, there's nothing fast, and, 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 um, likely, um, there, there will be a, a component of, of low-income housing, which, again, then restricts, uh, what they, who they can rent to, and what they can charge for rent, and that may alter the entire business model, um, and, and it would be the same with the IRB probably, um, and another, uh, way is if the entity owning and helping it was a, a nonprofit or church or something, then, you know, there's property tax interventions for that, the problem is, uh, I believe he's trying to make a profit, which is all good and well, and we support, um, but when it comes terms, comes to giving these, um, tax breaks or incentives, uh, it's not, it's hard to do that where it should be able to be.
But part of that presentation that Holloman did, it showed the, the cap rate on per-unit rental based on the airman's income.
Right.
If I remember right, so, yes, it is what I considered low-income housing.
Well, let me, um, you guys just showed me something here, Hobbs and Lovington, and this is in Laia County, they've used LIDA, Lo- uh, Local Economic Development Act, and grocery receipts-based incentives, uh, some of these, uh, have been used on housing, uh, in order to tie in broader development, uh, you know, not exclusively for housing-focused, but, but they are doing it through, through LIDA and, uh, grocery receipts. If I could interject, I, I believe that's how they did it, to do the highway improvements, they used grocery receipts, sales tax, I, I guess, or portion or something, they had a grant in there to do, you know, it, it was, it had nothing to do with the developer, it was a highway project that was needed in order to bring in the United Supermarkets, um, and, and same with that, with the housing, they were able to do a rebate, it was an infrastructure rebate, because we had to follow a loop-around system for the apartment project, which we have here, by the way, i- it is a loop-around system that the fire department approved.
So, if we were to reach out to, for use LIDA to do it?
I, I have contacts that I worked with the last time, and, and they get regularly applications for LIDA projects, they fail, um, I've yet to see another one come through, um, there was one by Tolarosa with pecans, or some different ones, but I can provide that contact information, they have to apply with the state, they have to provide data analysis, you have to prove how many employees you hire, um, so they have some, some restrictions, they then bring it to us and say, yes, this is a good project, and we start the process of agreements and ordinances.
What's the timeline on that?
Longer than his.
It's, it, it'll be several months.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's just not gonna work?
Yeah.
Um, and, so, sixty percent, if we're looking at the median income of fifty-nine thousand, that's like, close, sixty percent would be thirty-five thousand four hundred, um, and your lowest-ranked airman who is single, uh, is going to be bringing in forty-three thousand three hundred and eight a year, uh, so it's, it's above that, um, uh, target that, um, we would have to be renting to, for, to meet the low-income threshold.
In that presentation, it talked about airman's income and their allowance, that this, these, this development had to be within their allowance.
And that, that's nine forty a month, or the basic housing allowance.
And then, and their out-of-pocket was like a hundred bucks, so the government paid the nine fifty, and then the, the airman paid a hundred dollars.
Pamela, what kind of incentive did they give on that mining deal down there in Oregrande, when the commission gave?
Way back to, it was an IRB.
Let, let, let me, let me ask a, a question, if we were to partner up, which HUD allows this, right, if we were to partner up with a 501(c), would it, would it make things easier for you all?
If it was, uh, owned by a qualifying nonprofit, James, help me out, um, like, certain nonprofits, um, are exempt for, from property tax, um, I don't know all the details where it would...
Yeah, and I mean, even that is kind of interesting, how we have to go through those applications, so, when you have a, so, for something like that, I feel like what would end up happening would be, it'd be a little tricky, just because we, we do, we do grant exemptions for 501(c)(3)'s, um, based off of, you know, their evidence of use and non-generating of funds for, you know, profit and things like that, um, you guys saw one of the ones that I had to go through that was kinda tricky, where, you know, you're either proving that they're, it's using for, you know, most of the ones that we have here are gonna be churches and, you know, organizations like that, and we have to go through and just basically s- show that it is not generating some type of revenue for a specific organization, um, which this would be kinda tricky, because, you know, apartments are gaining revenue, so, um, there would have to be probably some type of, like, percentage-based, um, agreement on something like that, um, I know Kuya and Carl and I were just talking about, you know, different ways of, like, doing, like, tax credits over a certain amount of time and, and things like that, uh, because I asked them too, like, well, how does, like, you know, how does PILTS work in situations like this, like, I know, like, for instance, I don't know who was saying it, but someone was saying, you know, if they paid, if it was, if the organization's paying something like thirty percent of what that taxes actually would be during the time of the project, and then once it comes off of that IRB or whatever it would be on, then it would go into full effect on the property taxes, um, you know, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to think of, like, the different things that I know that I've heard of, or had or seen, um, the, the 501(c)(3), I mean, I think it would be something that would be able to get our foot in the door, but I don't know what that means really for us.
So, I've done one in Texas, okay, and, and so, and we, we've, uh, we've really researched this subject a lot, right, in, in order to, to ensure we could do it, so, so basically, a 501(c)(3) can partner up with a for-profit developer, as long as the 501(c) can show that they're furthering the mission of, uh, investing back into the community for affordable housing, it cannot be used for anything else, and it cannot be used for, you know, like he's saying, for other means, or, you know, it's, it's basically a 501(c) has to be structured, and it's only for housing, so what, whatever benefit they gain, or whatever money they make off of the development, now they have to reinvest it into the community for, uh, affordable housing, okay? And then there's, you know, the, the 501(c) has to report all of this, this type of stuff. But I know in, in Texas, we've done it, I'm, I'm not sure about you... But I know in, in Texas, we've done it, I'm, I'm not sure about New Mexico, but we've done it over there where, where a 501(c), then, you know, let, let's say whatever waiver of taxes we get or whatever, they get the percentage and then the money they get, they reinvest into affordable housing. But it has to be affordable housing.
So what is this? Because this has a different number than like the average eighteen, should we, they pay eighteen hundred dollars in taxes now? What is this forty-two hundred?
So that just gives you like a breakdown of like what is like, kind of like a distribution of where the taxes are going and everything. So that's kind of like, I mean, again, that doesn't really, that's just kind of like, again, a, a breakdown of where taxes are going and stuff based off of that property itself. So that doesn't really, that doesn't really justify, again, it, it's hard because like right now it's vacant land. So it's like, what, you know, this is what we have it valued at. So whenever this comes in, obviously, you know, it's gonna bring in a lot more, um, it's a lot more value new to the county and it's a lot more, um, as far as like the property taxes overall, once they actually start getting collected, it would be a little bit different. But again, we don't, we don't deal with distribution of where taxes go. We just deal with the valuation portion of it.
So what about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? What does that look like to try and go through? And yeah, and Hobbs and Levington both use LIDA funds.
And they got United Grocery Stores, if we could get that as part of it.
Let's make it happen then, today.
We can, um, we can, we can reach out to our bond counsel and, um, and there's also a, um, a, um, municipal housing, um, act, um, that is, it seems to be kind of like, like an IRB for the purposes of, um, of low-income housing. So, you know, we can get with, um, Mr. Muirhead and, um, talk to him about, um, those options and, um, we can reach out to, um, Ms. Heltler's contacts for LIDA. There's this redevelopment tax abatement, um, that might be an option. There has to be an establishment of a metropolitan redevelopment area. I, bottom line, affordable housing, more housing is needed, um, no question about it. It's, um, it's how do we, what hoops do we jump through to, to help facilitate this? So we, we can table this for the August meeting.
We can afford any missteps?
Yeah, I hope, I mean, we need a plan in place to, to, to get going. There's no guarantee that it's, um, would be accomplished at the August meeting. I know we can't do anything today, we can't take any action.
So what does it look like for economic development for us to invest in that? If we were to say that we would waive the three hundred thousand dollars in taxes over the next five years in order to move this project forward, and then we seek LIDA funding and all that, that way we can do the government's speed process of six months down the road getting something done. But yet we can get this housing project moving.
Uh, LIDA's gonna involve the state, it's gonna have to be a economic project and, um... We would have to raise the grocery seed tax as well. Um, even in, in ten years, we're talking, um, still less than a million dollars of property taxes abated. So the, the, the main question is, how can we facilitate under a million dollars of investment or abatement taxes or some type of subsidy in order to, um, facilitate low-income housing coming to the area?
So, so one of the things that, that has worked in the past, in, in, you know, for example, if you partner up with a 501(c) or if you, you know, and I, I don't know what New Mexico has, but, you know, you have, for example, a, uh, a housing finance corporation, right? So, so what happens is you have AMI levels and you, not all of it has to low in, be low income, but a certain percentage has to be low income in order to meet the guidelines. Let's say if you all are looking more, you, you know, let's say that threshold is a little bit off, you know, based on whatever the airman's salary is. We, we have the ability now, HUD doesn't control what, what we charge as market rate rent, okay? So we have the ability to adjust some of those rents to meet the criteria if needed. You know, obviously, the offset has to be there, right? Whatever the reduction is, would have to meet whatever the incentive is. I don't know if that makes sense.
I was looking at that, uh, housing authority. It does have to be sixty percent or less below median income. It is a loan, um, of, I think it's either two or three million dollars. You do have to apply sixty days prior to their regular meeting. Their next meeting is August twentieth of twenty twenty-five. So even that, we couldn't be done in time.
So Albuquerque has a direct tax abatement. What does that look like? What, what does that mean? And it's for incentivizing housing development.
They possibly have some sort of ordinance in place that allows that.
It may be this redevelopment tax abatement program.
So is that what, something that we could do then, is call a special meeting, approve an ordinance, and then do the tax abatement?
Oh, that, that's been appealed. And Ms., Ms. Valencia is referring to, um, Texas statutes a lot. That, that'd be really happy if we could, had Texas laws we could follow. Make a lot more sense.
So a direct tax abatement is tied to the ordinance that allows them to make them tax-exempt for five years?
I don't know enough about it since we've never done it. I don't know if it requires an Economic Development Board.
Can we, can we Google it?
Because it, it looks like Albuquerque's using a seven-year pause on property, uh, tax increases. And then it, it, basically what I'm understanding it is they freeze it, right?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, in reading this article, it's basically like, kind of, we do a freeze for low-income, uh, households. So people have to come in each year, the value, the, the, uh, the threshold is kind of increased. Right now it's at forty-two thousand nine hundred, so if you prove that you bring in less than that through your tax return or, you know, tax returns and all that stuff and everything, you can get a freeze on your property valuation. So basically, what we do is we'll, if their property's valued at two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and they come in and they prove that they don't make more than the forty-two nine, we freeze their taxes, um, until that property is removed from their name. You know, if they pass, they sell it, whatever, then they have to go and prove it again on a different property. This is kind of seem, it's not that way, but that is how, it looks like they're freezing it that way. That's what I was just telling him, I'm gonna kind of, I feel like I can talk to my, the, a couple, the, um, Assessor's Affiliate Chair, uh, he's actually the Vice Chair in Burnaleo. And I'll, I can ask him about what he knows about this and just to see if he can give me some guidance and everything like that. And then, you know, like, kind of like RB said, I mean, it looks like, I mean, we, I think we're all in agreeance that we want to try to help get this done. It's just, what's the proper avenue to do it is, is the thing. And I know that time is of the essence, I get that. But yeah, I think we're gonna have to kind of look into, and I'll, I'll get with you on some of these things too that I'm gonna ask, so.
So what if, and what, how do you do a tax freeze? And what if we did a tax freeze based on value right now for ten years?
James, were you looking at the redevelopment tax abatement thing?
Yep, the RT program.
That looks like we either own the land, uh, we own the land and we lease it back for seven years and it's not taxed for seven years, um, because it's government-owned.
I just read the same thing, for the abatement period, we would own it and lease it.
That, and so, um, for that, we need to make a, a declaration of, um, needing to be, um, redeveloped because of, and that's easy, and the basis is there for that.
It also has to be designated metropolitan redevelopment areas, whatever reading as well.
Yeah, we would have to do that. And what, the question is, can we do that? On our own, on the city property, or do we need, um, the cities, um, do we, the city to partner with us as well?
Who owns the property now?
It, it would, if I understand it correctly, it would be a lease, right?
Possibly, yeah, to, to us or...
To, to the city. And it's very similar to stuff that is done in Texas. Where, you know, you're, you're basically, um, you guys are, are gonna be sitting in the, in the ownership chair, right?
But the city of Alamo Gordo owns the property right now?
No, we, we own it.
You own it, you already bought it?
And then the county could lease the property from you as you develop it?
Correct.
And then that would get us around the property taxes. And why does seven years? Why, why is it a seven-year lease, not like a five-year lease?
Uh, that's, uh, that's what, what they set out in the statute, it specifically says seven years.
Is that similar to like a public-private partnership?
That's what I was thinking. And... Like, I think this is complicated. Let's see. So, so I don't know why it has to be seven years, but let's say it has to be seven years and you want to sell it in five years. What does that look like?
Well, I, I think there would be an agreement that between us that it wouldn't be sold for that amount of time. In other words, say, it would, the agreement would state that I would have to own it for seven years or, you know, you, you all would impose a time period.
So what does that look like, RB? If we lease this property, like you said, seven-year agreement, he develops it, we don't collect property taxes because we're the lease of it? What, what does this look like? He still manages the apartments, he still does everything he does, we just have the land?
The lease ends in seven years and, uh, it's, um, it's private, private ownership completely again and, and property taxes apply.
Well, that's, that seems like it's the easiest and the fastest way.
One, if we do two years, you pay the eighteen hundred per year and then we go into a tax freeze for the three years, that covers basically that three hundred thousand dollars and the thirty-six hundred. Why couldn't we do something like that?
Yes.
That covers five years right there. And then, I know the city would have to agree on, you know, that side of it, but that seems like that would be the easiest way around. In the first two years, great, because it's eighteen hundred a year. And then we put that three-year freeze on. That covers what we were initially talking about for five years.
Yeah, I mean, if it would work.
Are we allowed to do a tax freeze on it? Wax.
You are full of known.
We have to do one of these little, limited, little frameworks that, um, that narrowly through, um...
So because the tax freeze is only eligible for low-income housing, is that what?
Well, I mean, as of right now, yes. But that's where I feel like, you know, because again, I've never came, came across something like this before, so, you know, I mean, I could freeze any property I want, really, but I'm not gonna do that within state statute limitations. You know, like, I have to make sure that it follows the rules and everything like that, um, and to be fair and consistent. So just to make sure that it's done correctly, I mean, I think that's where RB and I are gonna have to have a couple conversations on how we can do this in the right framework. Whether my auditors don't come and say like, what the heck are you doing down there, you know? So, um, yeah, I mean, that's why I was saying, I just wanted to come and observe, you know? It's a lot, but, but no, I mean, we can, you know, I'll definitely, you know, I'll, I'll reach out. Like I said, I, I have a pretty good relationship with the Burnaleo County Assessor. I'll ask him like what he knows on this, um, and, you know, see, like I said, I can see for guidance and just kind of see. I mean, I, it makes sense what, what everybody's saying. It's just, again, like, I just, I don't think I have it within my authority to just press the freeze button on any account like that without any type of, uh, documentation that backs it. But again, I want to try to find the right avenue to make sure that we can, you know, tackle this project the proper way, so.
So with the eighteen hundred dollars a month tax that's collected right now, the schools get four fifty, five hundred dollars. That's what their portion of it is. And the city of Alamo Gordo gets four hundred and fifty dollars. And then the state gets seventy-five and the county gets six hundred and fifty bucks. Oh, the NMSU gets fifty bucks. So even if we just said that we went to do the abatement, which I guess we can't do, that's what the expense would be.
But if you do that through a private sector and that anti-donation clause gonna come into effect?
Well, that's why we're gonna go through one of these little things that have been created by the legislature that have been determined to, um, not violate, um, the anti-donation clause. And there's, there's certain constitutional exceptions to it. And, um, indigent, um, is, is one of those. And so low-income housing is, is often able to be facilitated by, um, public bodies because it's meeting that indigent exception. And with this, um, redevelopment, uh, act, um, it looks like the, the county or the city would need to own the land and lease it. And, uh, there would need to be a, a declaration that, um, it exists in a state of slum or blighted, um, or blight. And, um, that to, um, mitigate that or resolve it, um, we need to do this redevelopment process and, um, it's part of that we own it, we lease it. There's no property taxes during that period. But that requires, um, uh, public hearings and, um...
And the city's involvement, correct, being in the city limits?
Probably, I don't know that for certain, but, um, I mean, ideally, um, it would be initiated by the city.
So I guess, James, we're at a point, you need to find out what you can from your buddy in Albuquerque.
Are you talking to Dom Yon, Laura?
Yeah.
With all the options, I mean, in safety of you, I wouldn't want to say, I'm gonna sign this property over to you for seven years, Otero County. I mean, so what does that agreement look like if it has to be Otero County that owns the property that you're developing on? Otero County that owns the property that you're developing on?
Yeah, I, I, I know it's been done in the past, so it's, 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 um, and I'm gonna call it a public-private partnership. Right, where, where, you know, there has to be a lease in place. And my understanding is HUD allows it, I, I, I probably need to go back and just verify that. Um, but, but that's, that's allowable, cuz HUD understands. Ultimately, the, the, the mission of HUD is to provide housing, right? Whether it's market rate or, or low income housing, I, I think, I don't think they would have an issue with it. Where you guys are in control with the lease, right? And we waive the property tax for whatever years the, the abatement can, can be done. Or, or maybe it's not even called an abatement, it's just a freeze, right, until, until the property then comes back to us after a certain amount of time.
And what was that answer to that question, if we were just to freeze it? I can't remember.
Can't really, just.
James said his auditors probably wouldn't like that.
The only, the last suggestion that I have is, um, you need an intermediary, like you said, a five oh one C. So, White Sands Habitat for Humanity, um, could enter into that agreement. And then obviously, that money would go towards low income housing since that's what Habitat does, just an idea.
Okay. Now we brought a fourth. I, I don't know. I don't know what that looks like to meet your timeline too.
Well, keep, keep in mind that, that, um, I have to close the loan by December fifteenth, okay? So we've got several months in between here, right? Um, one, one other item that I'm looking at is I'm waiting for the Fed to meet in September. See what the interest rates are gonna do, because I have to lock in my interest rate within the next couple of months for, for the loan. But during this time, whatever we can achieve, as long as I present some, some letter or something. That, that you all are in agreement to do this, then, then HUD will approve it and it's basically in play. You know, uh, for the closing, then, I mean, cuz, cuz in reality, the property taxes. Aren't gonna be an issue until year two. You know, first year we're in construction, year two we're sta- we're in stabilization and then. Then, then we're gonna see the assessed value and then that, that would come into play. So right now, it would just be really an approval from you all on how we intend to do it. You know, whether we, we do this and we partner up with a five oh one C or, you know, we. You know, however you all decide you, you would like to pursue it.
Well, one other question, say there's a partner up and you partnered up with Habitat and Humanity. Something happens to you, are they on the hook for this other?
No, it's the, 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 there's, there's no liability on whoever partners up with us. Because the loan is based on me as a developer, okay? Um, HUD, th- these are not easy, easy deals to do with HUD. Um, they look at your background, they look at your portfolio, your asset management, uh, your ability to. To, to build and, and prove it, I mean, they don't just approve anybody on this, on these loans. But it is a non-guarantee loan, which means there's no personal guarantee on anybody's part. Um, now, if, if I was to fail, I can guarantee you I'd never get another loan with, with HUD, right? But, I mean, you know, that's, that's kinda how it's set up.
So. What if we put this on the next fun, the next commission meeting? With the absolute direction that we're gonna go, whether it's gonna be partnering with Habitat or ownership? Or something?
We will have to know that direction by the fourth of August cuz that's the deadline.
Good, that makes us move faster.
And that's the problem, uh, like. There may not be a clear cut, which is the best direction and ultimately, that's your decision. Can't tell you outside of a meeting, so, um, we may have multiple. Courses of action on the agenda that will weigh out and will go from there. Uh, they may require additional meetings after that, um. It's gonna be a process, we're gonna have to pull in the more, uh, local, um, entities. That we, like the city, um, that we can pull in to, to make this happen one way or another. To meet this demand, um, so ultimately, it's gonna, it's gonna provide additional low income housing. But, you know, more housing is going to lower the overall cost of housing, cuz right now, it's the supply, you know, demand issue. And, uh, supply is low and demand is high, so, cost is high, um. But it, 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 there's an absolute need and we just need to pull in as many concerned parties to work together. And make it happen one way or another.
So, tonight you're presenting the same thing to the city.
Yes, ma'am.
But your ask isn't the, the abatement to them, it is for the sidewalk and the permits.
Correct.
Yep, so the, the abatement and the taxes won't even be discussed tonight.
Um, it was, it was initially put on there, but, but I believe, uh, you all are the authority, right, for the taxes? So, y- you know, and, and, and also trying to abide by the, uh, anti-donation clause. That's why the, you know, for example, the perimeter sidewalks, the, uh, utility tabs. Everything that I've asked for is in the city right away, there's nothing inside the property. Okay, all that infrastructure is put in by us.
So what if we get a group together to meet a little work session before the next commission meeting? To figure out if we wanna use, um, Habitat or take ownership? And let's weigh, and then maybe reach out to LITA and say, hey, we need you to hurry up and make a decision. Can we get on this month's agenda?
What I can do is have them get in touch with my contact, they'll have to start the application process and the reporting. They'll, they'll have to initiate that.
But if they initiated it, then LITA's next meeting is not until the end of August and.
That was the New Mexico, that was that other program.
Oh, okay.
That was not LITA, I didn't look up LITA's meetings, uh. Once they approve the project and say it applies, it meets all the requirements, they bring it to us and then we start the process with a. It's a, it's not a power purchase agreement, but it's a PPA, a participating provider agreement, we have to pass an ordinance. But they have to do the first step and apply, but I can send that today.
How vague of a letter can we give you? Yes, we're gonna do something, we just don't know what yet?
Well, uh, no, no, I think, um, you know, basically that, I mean, whatever the. You know, let's say it's a five year hierarchy structure, right? I mean, there, there's still wor- obviously, there's gonna be work to do and it's gonna take some time. The only thing that would get me through the door right now is just some kind of agreement or letter from you all saying that you guys are gonna. Participate in it and do it, um, you know, whether we are being a leaseback or. You know, or a partnership with a five oh one C, I mean, they're, they're both options.
So if we have a couple of work sessions with them and figure out which direction, then we could have a letter by the next meeting.
You would, yeah, you'd have to have the letter on the agenda, um, to vote on and for the public to see. Um, yes, you would have to get those work sessions all done this week and next week though, prior to the fourth.
And, and as far as, say, I got, asking the city to pursue an IRB, uh, for the project, I think it's still on the table. Um, we, we didn't have any involvement in that decision, even though we're the, the taxing authority, um. Either the city or us can pursue an IRB, um, but they are, uh, because it's in the city limits. The more appropriate authority to be making that decision or, or, or initiating that, doing it. But, as I understand that they so, opted not to do that last year, and I don't know, it may, may, might be worth revisiting.
Yeah, my, my understanding and, and what they, what they came back on was that housing did not. Was, cannot be used on the IR, IRB, that's why they.
Which, which that firm that you, uh, uh, had hired, that, that gave the presentation. Uh, they weren't a known name firm, they were kind of a big deal, um, they, they felt the opposite. And, um, I do know that, uh, at least, um, two or three projects. IRB projects were, uh, done by Burnaleo County, um, for the purposes of, uh, low income housing. So, I think there's argument to be made that, um, it would fit.
Are you able to ask for an extension, even like a thirty day extension or the solidification of a partnership? Or do they want this closed by the end of the calendar year, cuz it's HUD?
Yeah, it, it's HUD, I, I mean, I, I'm at the point already where the commitment letter has already been issued. So, I have to close by that time, um, you know, unfortunately, I'm not. You know, I, I wouldn't be able to ask for an extension, so. I, I don't think they're gonna be very specific on, you know. Uh, what kinda letter we give them, as long as there's some kind of agreement in place, you know.
You, what, what, what's this letter, this letter is for HUD?
Yeah, for HUD.
And what are they looking for?
Well, they, they just wanna see, uh, if, if we're telling them we're gonna get technically an abatement for five years on property taxes. Then we wanna see that as an agreement, right? Um, because, cuz then they can do the calculation and then they go back to my underwriting and then they make the adjustments to my law.
Okay.
So, so right now where it benefits me is, is the loan sizing, right? Um, if I get that reduced out of the, uh, income, I, I'm sorry, not out of the income, the expenses. Then it adjusts the loan, it gives me more, more loan dollars to deal with. The price increases and tariffs and all the other stuff.
So it'll, no, a letter of intent work?
I can, I can ask the lender if that would work.
Okay, a letter of intent that we are working on abatement or.
A solution.
Yeah, a solution, and we can have that on the next meeting. And then that would allow us to either seek LITA or, or Habitat or ownership. Whichever looks the best for you, I think.
If you go the LITA route, it's gonna be more effective to apply through the city, since they have already set that up. They're already taxing for it and it's in their, their municipality. Might be worth bringing up tonight.
And, and Eddie, I did send you my contact with the state for LITA.
I really wanted to save the world today.
I appreciate it.
We're further ahead than we were.
Right.
Kinda.
So as of now, you're gonna see if a notice of intent would be okay for us to pass at the next meeting. Meanwhile, we're going to look for whatever procedures we need to do to make it happen. And at this point, I mean. I, I really think, I think we need to seek seven years instead of five. The request is ten, I think seven would be better. It seems like everything in the tax laws is leaning towards seven years, so let's just go with what has been and do seven years. And, uh, see what it gets us. Okay, so, our options, ownership, the partner, public agreement, nonprofit, LITA.
And, and just for reference, I believe, I have a partner that did one of those public-private partnerships in Deming. And I did, I believe they did it on a courthouse, if I'm not mistaken, and on a, uh, theater. Um, but, but it, it had to do something with the, they, they increased the grocery seed sales tax, I believe. That was, was part of it, right, so.
Okay. So, that's, you're okay?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna keep on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being the only one that wants to invest in our community. I, so, I mean, we gotta reinvest in you, I, I am passionate about that.
I appreciate that, thank you all.
Okay, so we need to make a motion to table this, I guess?
Make a motion to consider a letter of intent?
No, cuz that's not the motion on the table. You have to use the motion here and if it doesn't apply, you just let it die. Or you can just table the subject until next month.
Okay.
Yeah, we can just let it die for right now, yeah, okay.
We know to bring it back, yeah.
Okay, number thirty-five, request approval of MOU with Community Power of New Mexico to establish a framework for collaboration between the county. And CPNM in addressing select code compliance violations through a rest, restorative, non-punitive approach. It's a mouthful.
I know, that was a mouthful, huh?
It is a mouthful.
Yeah, um, good afternoon, thank you everybody for, uh, hanging out, thank y'all for your patience and thank you for being here. And I wanna thank, um, uh, panel over there as well. Um, so, what we've got here is a memorandum of understanding in front of y'all. Um, uh, our organization, my name is Evan Lambert, I'm president, founder of Community Power New Mexico. Um, we want to do a collaboration with the county as well as the city and as well as the village of Tularosa, right? Um, uh, RB and I have been working on this, uh, uh, for quite a bit now, getting things ironed out. But this is just to set up a framework where we can pilot, um, some programs, do a study on those, see where it needs to be changed. And then hopefully move forward with a public-private partnership, um, after a set amount of time, right, which we can discuss, but we need the legal framework first. Though we can also seek grants and we can have official lines of communication. Um, what we do as an organization, we've, we have, uh, something called the Labor Hub, where we have, uh, a whole mess of tools that have been donated by the community. Volunteers come in and maintenance them, we've got an entire database, as y'all saw last time that I was here. Um, and we have proven, uh, time and time again, that we can arm a volunteer labor force to go take care of things such as the community cleanup. That happened on this last Saturday, we provided a bunch of tools, uh, we provided hauling services, um, uh, safety equipment. Water stuff like that, in conjunction with the Commissioner Sharon McDonald, um, and it, it worked, simply it worked. Uh, we already, uh, go out and try to address code violation issues, we already do that, um, but that's not the point, right? Point is to do a collaborative effort, share resources, get something systemic in here, okay?
If, if, back up just a minute, tell me what kind of code compliance violations you're wanting to work on?
Uh, there, it would depend on the issue at hand and the resources that we have available, both us and, and yourselves. The, the ones that we've done, um, as of late, uh, working with, uh, Village Tularosa's code, code enforcement as well as. Um, uh, Joshua Sides over at City are mostly, um, like lawn, junk hauling. You know, uh, fire hazards for like, you know, piled up, uh, or neglected, um, uh, weeds and stuff like that. Um, but if we can do a collaborative effort, we can start to address more than that. Um, for instance, if a place has, um, like junk cars on the property and it's, and it's becoming a hazard. Uh, we can collaborate as a five oh one C three with a local, um, salvage yard, right? And then we can get that hauled off and that'll be a tax write-off for the salvage yard, code enforcement be happy, it's not gonna bog up the.
Tell me how that tax write-off works?
Uh, five oh one C three, so you'd be donating services at that time.
It doesn't work like that.
Okay, well, I'm sure we figure something out, um, uh, but point being that we can do a lot more together, right? And, um, uh, if we go to the next slide, please.
So, on that same deal again, you're mainly, you're doing cleanup, you're not doing any kinda construction?
No, we're not doing construction at this time, no, but, um, there could be a potentiality in the future where we have a, a contractor as a collaborator for that. Um, that can work through, uh, partnership with us and a five oh one C three status and then also a partnership with, um, with the. and then also a partnership with, um, with the county, city, village. So this is, uh, why this matters. Code violations often stem from material hardship, there's a lot of folks that are, um, uh, poor, you know, impoverished, elderly, uh, disabled out here. We have twice the rate of disability, uh, twice the rate of federal poverty, twenty point eight percent per the Federal Census Bureau. Traditional enforcement measures, uh, and parameters are, uh, often unfairly, uh, do punish those without the means to comply. And I know that's not the intention of any of our code enforcement. That is oftentimes what happens. Uh, elderly man, you know, can't mow his yard or what have you, can't afford a contractor, and then can't, you know, get help from the community directly, uh, or at least doesn't know how to or maybe, you know, there's not a, uh, system in place yet. That person's gonna get a code violation, right? Then they're gonna end up in the court system. And then we, at that point, just bogged up the court system and punished somebody for being elderly, you know? But we have the ability, we have the means as a community to remedy the situation. Uh, every code enforcement officer that I've talked to for city loves the idea, you know, of having a non-punitive measure. Not to tell them to give us a phone call, but like be able to collaborate together, have like a quarterly event such as, um, uh, the Day of Caring, but, and so just a one time, one time a year, we could do this quarterly. And we can supply the tools, we can supply the safety equipment, we can supply, um, the organizational support for it, get folks out there and remedies code violations.
So what is the purpose of the MOU? Because we don't have one with National Day of Caring, we don't have one with Thrive or anybody else, so why do you?
So if we have that framework, we can, um, we can do, uh, uh, we, we can seek grant funding as a, as a CBO and, uh, a county, uh, organization. We can also have a legal framework within which we can operate, gather data, have that open line of communication, collaborate, have, uh, systems analysis, and, and move forward in that direction. Uh, this is, and this is again, the MOU is to work towards a public-private partnership if that looks like a good idea after we pilot these programs of collaborative effort. And the goal of this, right? It builds a systemically humane, community-driven response that puts people forward, you know, as neighbors and not as something that's going to come into the court system. Or, you know, have a code enforcement officer having a door knock some poor folks over and over again, try to get them to somehow come up with money to pay for it or, you know, et cetera. And we could just do that as a community.
And how are you reimbursed for expenses?
What was that?
How are you reimbursed?
We're not reimbursed, this is a free service.
So, I'm, I'm, we're going back to your request, your community funding request. And one of the reasons why I was hesitant is because of liability of people handling, um, these tools and cutting the arm off.
To your question regarding the, um, the, uh, the insurance, one million.
That you've already paid for?
Yeah, yeah, we've got the, uh, the insurance for that, the liability insurance.
Because it still says that you loan out equipment, and what it says, the county will loan out equipment and materials.
No, that, that would be like, um, if we need a dumpster out at a certain location, uh, then when we'd be able to compensate for that with in-kind donations such as volunteer hours. Um, we keep metrics on everything, every little aspect of what we do. Can we go to the next slide, please?
I asked, since you just brought up liability, I, I asked RB a similar question. If they're on private property, working with us, what if they get bit by a dog or shot or injured? Are we liable?
Yeah.
Because we know we're going to sue. I just, that's my question.
Yeah. That they, uh, agree to maintain insurance and, um, indemnify the county against any claims. So the county is already, if the county is on a property due to a code violation, there is, um, immunity under the TORD Act. Now, them acting in their capacity, um, to provide a service to these folks, we need to establish a, um, a form, um, between them and the property owner. And, uh, we need to put in this MOU that they agree to maintain, um, insurance at a certain level and, uh, agree to indemnify, um, the county against any claims.
Which we are more than willing to do.
You're, you're gonna have to have some type of a liability insurance because every property that he goes to is going to be, you could go to a hundred thousand dollar property or you could go to a two million dollar property. That level, that's gonna have to be, if you don't make any money, I don't understand how you could pay for the general liability in your insurance.
Uh, grant funding, sir, and, uh, community donations.
So you already have the insurance?
Yes, we got a ten thousand dollar grant in conjunction with the city for, um, uh, a sustainability program. And we already work with the city in maintaining several of the public properties as well, parks specifically. And, yeah, so it works out. We also have a private donor that's gonna be matching that ten grand. And, uh, yeah, so. Uh, everything that was on the former request for funding at the community services grant meeting has been taken care of.
And we, we did have a resolution for Thrive in support of them.
But not a MOU, right?
We, we didn't have an MOU. It was spelled out in the resolution. And, um, really, the MOU is to, um, give us the ability to have them as a resource and, and to spell out expectations and, um, responsibilities and, uh, lanes of, of authority. And, uh, the, uh, the volunteer labor that, um, they're providing, um, gives us where code enforcement, um, sees appropriate to be able to provide, you know, um, some type of resource, mainly the, the dumpsters. But if we wanted to do something where we had, um, a county operator with county equipment, if it was, if something that, um, where it's gonna be more efficient to take a loader and scoop up a pile of crap, um, in ten minutes versus eight man-hours, there are hours of labor that they're providing, uh, gives us in-kind trade to do that service that gets around the anti-donation.
So what's the difference between CPNM and Make Otero County Beautiful?
Scope and, um, Keep Otero County Beautiful Board is, is, um, you know, doing great things, but they aren't, um, at least right now, um, manned with, uh, people wanting to go out there and get their hands dirty.
So why can't we join them together to come up with some sort of a plan for us to agree on versus working side by side, doing the same thing twice? We're gonna be seeking the funding twice, we're gonna be seeking resources twice?
Right now, they're, they're doing separate things as I understand it. Cause I, from what I s- understood from Keep Otero County, Beautiful's initiatives have been, uh, primarily focused on education and, um, getting the word out, um, versus going and doing cleanups.
Well, see, I thought when they did their last presentation that they were asking for cleanups, quarterly, monthly, by departments or something.
By the county to do it. They weren't putting, they weren't putting, uh, themselves, uh, on the, you know, to do it.
So we would have joined?
They're willing to do work, like the physical labor.
But if we join them together, then they can just coordinate.
We can absolutely, uh, uh, collaborate. We already collaborated with Keep, uh, Keep Alamo Gordo Beautiful, while that was still active as well. Now, we did just expand over to, uh, Doniana County, which has a lot more labor up there, like volunteer labor. And we were able to bring, um, a, a few cars full of folks up, uh, for the Saturday cleanups. It was actually a multi-county effort. Um, and that number's only gonna go up as far as the people that are available, willing, wanting and, and, and capable to help and do good work. Now, if we look at the, the side of the presentation, the goal is here, right? Prevent unnecessary fines, citations and evictions, um, support residents in need with hands-on assistance, keep communities safe, clean, dignified, change the, the means by which code enforcement can operate, unburden the local resources like county resources and judicial district resources, um, spent on follow-ups on legal proceedings, on, on, on further enforcement. And if, if successful, um, we can share the results, methods, expand to the surrounding communities and surrounding nonprofits and, um, and hopefully generate something that, that, that's never been done before. Can we go to the next slide, please? And this helps elderly residents, twelve point three in the Federal Census Bureau. Disabled residents, we have fourteen point eight percent of our community on Otero County, Otero County that's disabled. It's again, twice the rate of disability as per the national average. Uh, low-income residents, twenty point eight percent according to the Federal Census Bureau. And aside from that, we have thirty seven point six percent of our youth at or below poverty level. Veterans, fifteen point five percent of our community's veterans. It's obviously a really high rate, we live next to a military base. And I'm sure that, uh, many of us are familiar with, um, veteran poverty rates, you know, it's, it's pretty tough getting out, but at least they have the VA and, and all that good stuff. This helps new homeowners without access to tools, be it knowledge of how to use them, the, um, uh, monetary capability to purchase them or even rent them. And helps neighbors without access to transport, community members around those who we help, right? Um, we can take a blighted property and clean it up. Instead of having a code violation for the property owner, we can go out there and actually just knock it out, right? This also helps code enforcement officers, it's structured non-punitive interactions, increase public trust and communal integration. So instead of code enforcement seeing it's like, oh, they're, they're gonna send my grandpa to court, right? It's, oh, code enforcement came out and they understood that my grandpa didn't have the means, right? And then they just organized with the community-based organization and took care of it, right? Cause like, we could again, do this by ourselves without you, but that's not the point. We want to make sure that people understand that the government here and code enforcement is helping. And that's, that's the system with which it works through. Instead of passing it to, to us, right? We wanna make sure we work together and share resources. And the county and toll judicial district legal system is gonna spend a lot less time and labors on, on these violations, less bog down in the court, less time funneling everyone through an overburdened system and more proactive measures in partnership with the community. Next slide, please. We would be bringing a trained volunteer labor force, power tools, hand tools, safety equipment, uniforms, work site management, property cleanup, if there's minor repairs like for a fence or something, debris removal, dump hauling, educational outreach, we can bring in like tutorials on how to keep stuff up, educate folks on what the ordinances are, right? Ninety percent of folks have never read the ordinances at all, so, um, getting folks to understand what we need them to apply with for safety and for cleanliness, right? Is a big thing. We can do tool safety, how-to classes, uh, methods and structure for community building and engagement. The long-term goal of this, right, would be that it never reaches code enforcement. Cause we're getting these volunteers out there and they're understanding that, oh, it was just our time and the tools are free and materials are free and it's just some elbow grease, right? Long-term, uh, the long-term goal is to make this a proactive program, right? Where it's autonomous and we can actually sort of back off and have a less, less heavy workload. Now, uh, we'll also provide metrics for tracking, uh, uh, the data involved in this, like volunteer time, tools used, monetary value saved by the community, et cetera. We'll, um, ensure that there's media, both, uh, formal media and social media representation for this program, for the county and for, uh, the community efforts. And we'll also, um, uh, continue to seek an expanding network of contractors, material sponsors and community-based organization collaborators like Keep Otero County Beautiful. Um, next one, please. So our tracker here, um, uh, since April third, we've had eight hundred and eighteen point five nine, I checked it this morning, uh, volunteer labor hours. Um, and that, that comes up to twenty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars at the federal rate of thirty-three dollars forty-nine cents per volunteer labor hour. That's a mouthful. We've had tools checked out for two thousand nine hundred and twenty-six hours. We've saved the community through the tools being checked out, uh, thirteen hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And we've been actively arming volunteer labor forces for community cleanups, for our public gardens and for youth education. Uh, we've worked with the Counseling Center and the JCCP program, taking at-risk youth and, uh, folks that have caught, you know, a charge, um, and a conviction and then, and then instead of doing their workbooks and packets, they learn trades from local contractors, from certified folks, and build things for the community. And this is another way that we can do that. Uh, we can teach these kids how to run a lawn care business if we want to. So this is a fallen tree that was, uh, a crossover somebody's sidewalk, Memorial Day twenty twenty-four, we went and cleared it up. Um, there's a couple of disabled folks living there, they got three kids, couldn't get them out, take them to school, couldn't leave to go to the doctor. They called the city, asked for help, and the city said, we can't do anything because that's private property, um, but we're gonna find you in three days if it's not cleaned up. And so we heard the call and we, again, armed volunteer labor force and knocked it out, four hours. Next, please. These are some of our many volunteers on our, uh, public cleanups that we already do. Um, this is also photos from our, uh, Labor Hub where we're taking a twenty, uh, a, a building that's been abandoned for about twenty years. And, uh, we went ahead and did mold abatement, we've painted, we've repaired it, we've turned it into a functioning, usable and thriving spot for our community. Go ahead and next. So code compliance in Tularosa, we received an email from Mr. Chasworth, his father had passed away. So longtime community members of Tularosa, they were unable to remedy the issue from Oregon, where he works two part-time jobs, right? But he's inherited his father's property. Um, the property become overgrown, junk had been scattered and deteriorated. And through our volunteers and communication with code enforcement officers out there, we were able to remedy the reported violations as well as several others because the code enforcement officer didn't, didn't, uh, flag them for violation on most of what was going on, right? Because they understand the situation. Like our community's tight-knit, code enforcement officers do not wanna punish people for things that they can't control, right? And that puts us in a situation where those don't get, uh, reported, they don't get flagged and then nothing gets done, right? But here we can just go knock it out. Next. Uh, so this is the property before. The specific code on this one was due to weeds over six inches high. Um, as you can see, it's quite a bit overgrown, um, there's, uh, there's, we can't really quite see it, but there's junk, rusty stuff, there's, um, uh, some things, chemicals out there, you name it. Go ahead and hit next. And so this is what it looked like after two days. We're actually, um, going back out on this property to finish the cleanup. This is like two days of us working and that's way better. The code enforcement officer came before and, and after this day to check it out. We're in agreeance that, um, so long as we keep, keep out there and work on it, um, that there's not gonna be a, uh, a, a fine levied against this young man, right? Next. Um, we armed, again, we armed the labor force for the community, community-wide cleanup, uh, this last Saturday. It was about a ten, twelve-hour workday for us, but it was, it was really worth it, we helped out so many people. Um, we supplied tools for the, I think it was about forty or fifty people that were out there. Safety equipment, gloves, masks, glasses, um, waters, uh, as well as weed whackers, uh, rakes, hose, pliers, hammers, drills, shop vacs, um, you name it. And it was a great success, just in District Five alone, we filled, uh, uh, three dumpsters, just four at the top. And, uh, yeah, uh, next, please. So what y'all would bring is code enforcement network with knowledge of people, properties and histories. Our code enforcement officers live here, breathe here, and they know who they're, who, who they're responsible for. They know the people that they're going door knocking and, and they understand where folks would fit into this program. Uh, material support such as possible fee waivers or equipment or staff time up to in-kind value, not, doesn't have to be the value, just up to that, we don't want your payment anymore than, than that, um, of our contribution and to guide our community to the solution proactively. The ability to cement successes into ordinance where reasonable, right? Shared responsibility in, in developing the relationship into a public-private partnership, should it work with this MOU, right? Should it work with the pilot programs where we would be interfacing with code enforcement, collecting, um, uh, potential clients for this program and then enacting the, um, action for that. And then a willingness to share results and successes with neighboring counties and their CBOs. So what that could look like, um, is the same thing we're doing with, uh, City with the Parks Department. So, uh, we're gonna, we're setting up a meeting right now, um, with Belinda Base, uh, as the Director of City Parks and Rec, um, myself as President of Community, Community Power of New Mexico, and then the Los Cruces Parks and Rec Department, and then the President of Community Power of Doniana, to see how we can collaborate, share resources, best practices, programming, and see how we can fit in together, right? Next, please. Next, please. So this is sort of a flow chart, right? So right now, where it's at is the code violation gets observed, there's a door knock, there's information gathering, there's kind of qualification for it, and then there's multiple notices, and legal actions, fines, hours of accounting and judicial work, and then hopefully at the end of the day, the code violation is remedied, right, at the end of the months long process. But where we could come in is in that qualification process, if this property owner is indigent, or disabled, or elderly, you know, if they're on social security benefits, and they have fixed income, can't afford, can't be mobile enough to go handle a situation, then they can be entered into this program, placed into a pre scheduled event in their locale, right? So we'd have one for Tularosa maybe in March or something, right? And then we can gather up all the necessary actions that we need to do, and then ahead of time, we'll be notifying the community and our volunteer base about this happening. And then by the time we get to that date, we'll have a list of everything needed to be done, we will have a list of the tools that are needed, the volunteers that are needed, the approximate hours that are needed, and then we'll just go knock it out, right? And then from there, we both, well, then the code violation will be remedied, right? This person will never be in the court system, right? But we'll also be doing the documentation, documentation of it, photos before and after, cost analysis, and analysis of, you know, cost benefit, you know, alternative process analysis. We'll develop a report, and then we'll adjust the program as necessary, based on that analysis, as well as feedback from county, from code enforcement, and from the community itself. Next, please. So broader impact would be that it prevents displacement, so instead of, you know, having a lien put on somebody's house, or what have you, because they can't pay the fine, or they don't go to court, or yada yada, it would prevent that displacement, and would lower the future homeless population, because if you can't afford to pay the court fee, or what have you, or you can't afford to get a contractor, you know, you're probably not gonna be able to get good credit and get a new apartment, you know, or a new house, or something like that. It would build public trust with local government and law enforcement officers, right? It's something that I think we can all agree, in these times, we need that public trust, right? It strengthens our community's civic engagement, volunteerism and interdependence. Now, this is a program that I have looked all over, I've had our staff look all over for something like this, we can't find it, it's never been done, at least to our knowledge, right? We could be the first in New Mexico, in the United States even, possibly, to do something like this, to have that CBO relationship, to have it cemented into the way that things work here. We could take care of our own, right? And this would save the county and judicial district monetary and labor expenditures, while utilizing volunteer labor to remedy the code violation at hand. And it turns a net negative impact into a net positive, right? Because we could get grant money to have this whole thing funded out a positive, right? And it, again, could serve as a pioneer program for the rest of New Mexico's rural communities. And next. So we had joint pursuit of public and private grants, as this hits many marks for grant funding, and so far, it's never been done, this is a method of gaining funding from both the private and the public aspects of the partnership. And we can have flexible roles on that for whatever makes sense. There we go. So again, this is just the groundwork for developing into a public private partnership model for ethical, efficient, fiscally responsible, and community centered code enforcement. Working together, we will transform the meaning of code compliance into communal opportunity for restoration, and change the way that our county government impacts generations moving forward. Okay, done with the presentation. I appreciate y'all's time, listening to me yap a little bit, but what are the questions y'all have?
Cody, what do you feel about this?
I think it's a good start. When I was with city, we had a property that
Cody, punch it.
Yeah, come on in. Oh, yeah. I'll grab my water. I think it's a good start. You know, there's room to make improvements and changes, if need to be. When I was with city codes, we had an abatement officer, so if there was a property that wouldn't comply, we would send the gentleman out, and he would mow the grass, haul whatever off, and whatever hours he used the equipment, he would bill the people for, and then they put that on their water bill. So they'd end up paying for it anyway. The county doesn't have that, so if we have a property that doesn't comply, we're just, all we can do is hope they do it, or take them to court, and hope it goes all the way But with this, we would have his organization to go in and do cleanups on the properties, if it meets everybody's standards and requirements.
So this would be a thing that you would be coordinating, working with him on
Yes.
Setting up the dumpsters, and blah, 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 the whole, kind of overseeing it. So RB legally, does this, is this going to put the county into a, how you wanna say it, responsibility type thing? How, is this a legal thing? I mean, in a lot of good ways, this is a good start, like you say, keep Otero County one, one way to start some of these problems, you know, sites that we have. And you participated with the city one last week, right? Yeah. So.
I see it as a, an additional tool in the code enforcement's tool bill, when they assess the situation, you know, and we need to, what do we need to do to get this problem remedied? Is taking them to court what's needed here, because
That hadn't really worked very well, has it?
It has not. And this is a way to get faster change, and I, there's a few things I want to add to the agreement in order to just give us some legal cushion, but, you know, I think it's completely a legal way to accomplish the end result that everyone wants, which is a more cleaner, beautiful, more beautiful community. It's also, yeah, it's mitigating dangers, and it's also helping people that are in need, but it's not taking government resources that we either don't have, or can't provide legally to accomplish these things. This is a nonprofit that is, has their own source of funding and resources, that is, their purpose is to fill this gap that exists, and it works.
So basically, the county's part in this would be negotiations, or just trying to set up disposals, dumpsters for you?
Yeah, just as needed, as needed for the project at hand, and whatever makes sense. And again, we, we're not gonna ask for anything over, we're not expecting anything over what our in kind donations would be anyway. And to be clear, this is not a maintenance program, right? We're not gonna be going out there every week, you know, as lawn care, but this is a clean slate program, right? And then we can make the community aware that all they need is a free Sunday, and they can go clean up their grandma's yard, or their neighbor's yard, they don't need to go buy a lawn mower, we got one, we got six, you know? The, the goal is to work with code enforcement to eventually have a way lighter load, and have a really restorative program, and build community interdependence as well. We don't want to be the go to guys, you know?
We may not even need to provide resources in some of these cases.
Yeah, very often.
The collaboration is simply Cody saying, hey, Evan, you know, one, two, three, Cotton Street is overgrown, and has quite a bit of trash, can you go check it out and see if you're able to help these folks out? And they go weed eat and mow and fill up some trash bags, and we don't provide anything other than this is a problem case for us, and we think it's one that you could resolve based on the owner's situation, et cetera. And instead of needing to spend time trying to get them into compliance when they're not capable of it, or, you know, if there's some barrier, it gets resolved this way.
We actually did exactly that this last week for city code, city code enforcement. They had an issue where there was a gentleman whose fence was too high, because it was on the corner lot, and you couldn't see, you know, who's coming on the street. And so they ended up taking the gentleman to court about it, and then once they had the gentleman at court, they realized that he was in very poor health, right? And probably could not afford to modify the fence, et cetera. And so we went out, and in coordination with city code enforcement, and we knocked on his door, and he did not want help, right? And that does happen. So again, this is also consent based, you know? So we narrow it by certain qualifiers that we can figure out with Cody and with RB, to, you know, begin not overburden ourselves, not provide a maintenance program, and not, you know, put our resources towards folks that have the means, but instead, really find these problem cases where folks don't have the means, and take them out of this punitive sort of money pit for the county and for themselves, that, you know, just makes it worse.
How do you, how do you get, Cody, is this your part? You would go get permission for these people to, for this group to come in, and, or is this, that would be between this group and the homeowner to, who's gonna be responsible?
The way I understand it, we would go make contact with a person, and then, you know, all of our cases, we can use our discretion, timeframes and everything. But if we make contact with the person, and then realize, well, if they didn't have this, they'd be homeless, or they're living on their property on their car, and they just don't have the physical ability to clean the property up, then I would call them and say, hey, here's the person I have, here's the address, the situation that I'm aware of, and then he can go look at it and see what he has ability to do.
Yes, and at that point, what we'd do is, we would go out, you know, we establish, you know, contact with the owner first, via email, phone number, whatever we have, let them know that we're gonna come out, check it out, take an inventory of what needs to be done, see if it's within our scope, and then we would identify a date for that to be done. And we would like to batch a bunch of them together in the same area, right? You know, that way, we can knock them all out the same day, and we wouldn't have to call six dumpsters out, you know, like one dumpster here, one dumpster there, it should be one, maybe two, and one centralized area that was preplanned, due to the need, need case for it. If that makes sense.
So I'm gonna add to the agreement that they agreed to execute a signed agreement with the homeowner, granting them permission to enter their property and do this. And so what I see Cody doing is making contact, you're in violation currently, you need to remediate this within such and such time, and if you don't, we will have to take you to court. There's an option, if you need it, for this nonprofit organization to provide assistance. And if they were to give a thumbs up, then Cody would let Community Power know that this property is in need of assistance, and from that point, Community Power makes contact with the property, and gets permission, does the agreement, and cleans it up. But it needs, you know, as this goes, we'll get lessons learned, and see how things are working. Some of these properties, like, if the person is actually incapable or incapacitated for one reason or another to deal with something that is continual, such as grass growing, and weeds and stuff, is Community Power willing to come by every two months and do that? Is that part of what they want to do? Because some things aren't gonna be one and done.
Yeah. Now, the maintenance aspect would be a separate part from this, from this agreement, that would be specifically between the community member and us, right? We do varying amount of stuff, like, for instance, we take a disabled gentleman's trash out, we do that multiple times a week, whether it's myself personally, because I know him personally, or, well, now I do, through this, or it's one of our volunteers. We make sure that his trash gets out, because he can't roll his wheelchair out to the alley and throw it away, right? We take food out to some shut ins here and there, we already go and clean up sidewalks, so that way folks can get down, you know, if they're disabled. Because we don't, we have a lot of blind folks out here, and, you know, getting hit with a branch every time you walk down the street ain't too fun. So we already do these kinds of things, and we have the volunteer base through, through our, our community volunteers, through the JCCP program, through the 12 judicial district court, and the folks that are in recovery, you know, and they need mandated community service, they come out with us. We already have a volunteer base who's willing to do this. So as far as like the maintenance aspect, if they need help, we'll get them help, but that's not gonna be part of this program.
So I love the idea, obviously, it's needed, and the help aspect of the disabled and all of that is one thousand percent something that I support. But putting on the hat of the county, and the protection of the county, I think this needs to be developed a lot more.
Yeah, that's what, that's what it's
So when we talk about assessment, who qualifies? I want to see what that looks like.
Yeah, me too.
I want, so a twenty five year old that's too busy to pick up their fifty junk cars out of there, you know, is that something you're gonna address?
That would be, so yeah, that would be something that would be
I want to see what that looks like.
Yeah, this, this MOU is so that, that way Cody and I can work together and figure out what exactly
But I mean, I want to see it before we enter into the MOU, what it looks like. And because this is groundbreaking per se, that was never been done before, I think we need to open it up the right way, not just
Yeah, it's gonna have to be step by step.
This contract, you know, the disposal fees waivers have no problem with that, but I think you need to add in here, that you will add every single address that that garbage comes from, so that we can also have accountability for that.
Yeah, yeah, that's where
Loaned equipment and materials, we mentioned that we're gonna use a front end loader if needed, well, we're gonna call Tom every week, we need a loader here, need a loader here, but then we go to the ditch project, where we don't have time to do either, and now we're gonna put Tom for cleaning up properties every week?
Again, it wouldn't be every week, we're looking at it properly every quarter.
Well, I'm just thinking of tractor road right now. I mean, just like, yeah, it needs a loader.
We need to have a critical eye.
And a loader could get it done in a day, I get that, but at what point do we stop? That's what I want to see in writing.
That's, I see that's Cody's department right there, he's gonna be the scheduler, he's gonna be the one that's gonna judge, okay, this group could possibly help you? Am I seeing it right?
And it would be, if we needed a front end loader, and Tom's out fixing roads, it's not available, the county comes first. But if Tom's sitting there with the front end loader that's not being used, and hey, we could use it on this property, then that's the only way we would use Tom's equipment is when it's available, it's not gonna put him in a bind.
Yeah, and again, we're not gonna go out and do one by one, right? It's gonna be batched out in a particular locale, for a particular weekend, if you will, and so we'll know ahead of time what's gonna be needed, way ahead of time typically, because Cody's gonna know what's gonna be needed, and we get to go check it out and confirm, and then of course, we will have all of the data, the addresses, the tonnage that we're hauling, the volunteer labor hours, even the monetary value of the tools that have been used. And so we'll be able to collect all of that data, so that way we can make responsible decisions.
And I'm still bothered by the loan of equipment.
Again, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be touching it.
I just see fingers being cut off.
This isn't loaning any
Yeah, no, we're not, we're not loaning things out.
That's from the county. If we, dumpsters, we can clarify that, that would be roll off dumpsters, any county equipment that is utilized in this will be operated by a county employee.
Exactly.
And it will be commiserate with the hours volunteered, you know, we can, we can use the national volunteer rate, which is like thirty, yeah, thirty four dollars or something an hour, so every hour, they provided thirty four dollars, this is stupid, but we can provide two hours of county employee work almost. So it's gonna be like that, we're not giving them, they're not giving equipment under this agreement to people to do stuff on their own, this will be their volunteers.
Yep. So who would be in charge of, or responsible, so they brought a dumpster out there, and they lowered it with a bunch of hazardous stuff that you know that can't go to our So, they brought a dumpster out there and they lowered it with a bunch of hazardous stuff that you know that can't go to our landfills and stuff?
So, that, that, that would be the, uh, the, the trained volunteers aspect of it. Um, we, because we, we do have a training process, um, as well. Like, we have four of our staffers right now getting trained with the thirty, uh, a thirty-hour, uh, general industry OSHA certification as well. But we also have to make sure that, you know, cause we don't, we're not gonna touch asbestos. Uh, we're not gonna, you know, like, touch those kinda like hazmats. If they are hazmats, we will have to set them aside. Um, we have specific, uh, uh, containers clearly marked for sharps. Uh, we have instructions and we have, uh, we have, uh, staff supervisors for these programs as well.
And then you put in here for grant funding? Who's gonna oversee the grants?
Uh, that would be, um, dependent on, uh, who qualifies for that grant. So, um, be it for the public aspect or the private aspect, so, I mean, there are grants that we can get from Working Together. Uh, City and Community Power just got, uh, a grant, uh, together as well, um, for Working Together. And due to the fact this does hit a lot of those grant funding hot word marks, right? There's ample things that we can, that we can pursue, um, to where this becomes not a cost, but it becomes more than self-sustaining and actually built. And, uh, so it really just depend on, on who the grantor, um, designates as the grantee for that.
And that's what leads me back to Keep Otero County Beautiful. We established them so that they could lead for grant funding, so that they could do exactly what this is doing. So, why can't we join them together?
Well, why aren't they doing this, right?
Right.
But we can collaborate together. They could be the fiscal sponsor on behalf of Otero County, um, to, to manage that, that grant money. Or we can be the fiscal sponsor for any grants that we get as a, um, as a state-level entity.
And commissioners regarding grants, any grants that we allow Keep Otero County Beautiful to apply for, we are the fiscal agent. Typically, with any grants, you give prior approval prior to application if there's match funding. If it's a smaller grant without us shelling out any cash, I can approve those grants. So, if we're gonna manage a grant, it, it can't just be willy-nilly applied for, we don't know what we're getting or what our cost is.
Right.
We'll, we'll be applying, any that are, um, are for public bodies will be, uh, initiated and going through us. Like, they might say, hey, did you guys, you know, talk to Pablo and be like, are you aware of this? And for their purposes, on grants, they'll apply for the ones that are eligible for nonprofits and not public bodies. That would work, expanding our coverage. Cause even Co- Co- Keep Otero County Beautiful is, um, is going to, is, uh, under the umbrella of a public body. So, any grants they're going for have to be, um, uh, for a public body.
So, by this MOU, any grant they apply for has to be approved by us?
Uh, any county, or any that is, that is a public body.
Yeah, we, we can't apply for grants for the public body.
Yeah, 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 like grants that are, um, eligible for nonprofits, um, and not public bodies. Cause, you know, some are eligible for, for government, some are eligible for nonprofits, some are eligible for both. If it's something that is eligible for a government, that'll fall under our purview. Nonprofits, they, they're, ones that are eligible for nonprofits, they should be going for it.
And we are, we already are, so.
So, we don't really need to approve this today, cause you said you're gonna make a bunch of changes to this, or?
We can make some updates and, uh, and, uh, we can get the form in place, um, and, uh, and get the proof of insurance. And, uh, Commissioner Brough brought something up that we were.
I wanna see the qualifications of the property. You know what that application looks like or, or what? And then the disposal fees, I want to see what that looks like when they're going and they're getting this, uh, the fees waived. They're cleaned on this such-and-such property in the county, and that's why we're waiving, waiving the fees. And then the specification of roll-off dumpster on here that we would provide and move. And just, this is AI-created, so I want it to be a little deeper and more personal to our county.
The disposal fees, if it's one of our dumpsters will go to the landfill and we don't, we won't pay for that anyway, right? If it comes from our convenience center or one of our personal.
Yeah, we, we don't pay for it, we just get a weight to get, uh, how much weight was dumped.
So, that, there wouldn't really be a disposal fee.
Yeah. They can't give you any fees to apply.
And then, and I really, I really wanna talk to Keep Otero Beautiful. Just, I don't want this to be a competitive environment, if we can join them into one.
Should be collaborative, should be unified effort.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean.
Uh, you know, um, you know, one other thing is, uh, that, um, they agreed to attend, um, Keep Otero County Beautiful meetings and give a report and, uh, see where there's room for collaboration.
Because you mentioned education too, they're already doing education, so we're gonna be double doing it and I just.
I, I, I wouldn't consider it double doing it, because we're providing, uh, a, a bit of a different service, but we can absolutely collaborate and make sure that we're not over, overstepping or, um, doubling down on anything. Uh, that could potentially be the public body that is sort of the, 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 the joint between us funding our actions, you know, and code enforcement. Right? So, it could be like Keep Otero County Beautiful is sort of like overseeing, like, the statistics, the data, the education, the grants for the public body aspect, while also possibly, you know, helping out where it's needed, you know? With those things, we can, we can collaborate and communicate, make sure that we're not doubling down on anything, wasting resources.
And you said you already have an MOU with the city?
Uh, no, we're, we wanted to pilot it here, eh, at county. But we have a different MOU at the city, uh, for something else, not for this program.
Okay, so, the next thing I ask is what is the balance of the city and the county? If you're gonna be doing it for both of us, and we're gonna be entering in some of grants and all that kinda stuff, how do we know? How are you gonna differentiate? Okay, we did a cleanup in the city, we're not using that funding. I mean, it's gonna be a one.
Yeah, that'd be.
To Cody right here.
I know, I know, but, um.
Cause we would, we would be getting the, uh, the, the work sites or the clientele list, if you will, from city or county code enforcement, right? So, that's how we would differentiate.
And county always has priority or city.
Of course. We all are bigger.
I just wanna see what that looks like in this.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you refer us one more time to me?
And then this is the thing that is important.
There's a lot of things that are important, my mind is spinning.
I think the signed waiver.
Yep, the signed waiver, the application for the who qualifies.
Yeah, so.
You know, a 25-year-old airman that doesn't have time to mow his grass, does that qualify?
Right, those, these are the kinda questions that we do have answers to.
I mean, that's, that's what I wanna see.
That, yeah, that's, that's the, that's the agreement to move forward and collaborate to get to any sort of actual, like, legally binding thing. Uh, this is an understanding, it's not something that is legally binding, like a public-private partnership, right?
And then, and then.
But it's a framework.
Because we're entering into like a permanent agreement with you, your volunteers, do they have to get background checks? Do they, what, does this open this door?
We perform background checks on, on our volunteers that work with, you know, kids or with elderly people, or, you know, that aren't overseen. Like, folks that are, you know, going out and taking out elderly persons' trash, yeah, absolutely.
And then, so where does that background check fall in for somebody that's doing community service?
Um, so, a lot of times, uh, the places that we get the community service from are from the judicial system, right? Um, and so, like, for instance, uh, we did, we, we have discretion on who we can take in and who we want to take in. Uh, so, we won't, we won't be taking thieves out to, you know, uh, elderly people's properties, we don't do that. And, you know, it's also with the oversight of, uh, uh, not only, like, like, uh, our organization, but like, you know, code enforcement. Like, we've, we've gotta clear that stuff, absolutely. But the majority of our volunteers are just regular, regular folks, and, again, they, they can't even pick up a circular saw unless they've taken the appropriate, uh, training course on it. So, we're very careful with these kinda things. CY, right?
I just wanna see cleanup.
Yeah.
I want, I wanna see coordination with Keep Otero Beautiful, I want their input on it, I want, let's make it better.
Yeah, that's, that's the whole point of, of this. And I really appreciate you having those kind of questions, cause that's what makes it better to where we can get to the point where we have that, that, that longstanding agreement.
I think the qualifications, we're not gonna have and go look at a 25-year-old kid that is cleaning his yard. We'll follow our normal procedure.
And is that discrimination? What does this open the door for? That's, that's what I meant to say earlier.
Yeah, we, we need to develop some, like, hard lines, guidelines for it, you know?
The, the able-bodied person that doesn't need this help isn't.
Because I don't have time to get my air.
Well, I mean, we, we can use, I mean, we can use already existing, we can use already existing means-tested things like ASAP benefits or SSDI or something like that as well, to kinda coordinate and validate those, those guidelines.
Yep, okay, I want you to work on this some more.
Yeah.
And I want, I wanna listen, so.
I want us to work on it more.
And Rodney, I wanna hear what Rodney has to say.
And Rodney's for Keep Otero Beautiful, yeah. Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, but promising though?
It's looking better. How's that?
Yeah, yeah, it'll, it'll look even better.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a thousand more questions for you next time you come in.
Please do.
And it is because of the liability of the county.
Absolutely.
And the way it appears, so I'm not against your program, I'm just pro-county.
Yeah, yeah, we're pro-county, pro-community.
Okay.
Um, we just wanna make things better in a way that, that lasts for generations.
And I, and I, and don't take offense to this, cause I see your passion and all that, but developing you into a little bit more of a professional mode when you've laid this out? If you're gonna be the, the criteria across the United States?
Yeah, right.
You, you want it to be better?
Yeah, absolutely, which is, again, this is groundbreaking, as you said earlier. So, um, as we move forward, uh, we're gonna be doing a lot of things we've never done before, but that's how things change. And yes, we are committed to, to that growth as well. It's gonna look different in Don Yen, you know? They have different needs, they have different people, they have different problems, they have, you know, uh, different resources, so.
Don't let yourself get into a bad situation. There's a lot of things called demo permits, air quality. You need to listen to either if you're with Cody or whoever you're with through the city, because there are pretty heavy fines if you get.
Yeah, and a lot of these could possibly end up being, uh, further collaborative efforts between the different code enforcement agencies and us, and Keep Otero County Beautiful, and Keep Alamo River Beautiful, to kinda share their resources, make sure everything's done right, and, and make sure it's, it's done effectively and efficiently.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to table this for, until we have more clarification on the MOU.
Yeah, we'll, we'll shoot, uh, have something for the next meeting.
Okay.
We'll get with, uh, uh, all the pertinent folks in between now and then, now that we at least have the, this on the table to be tabled, right? And we got a better understanding of what's going on, um, we'll get together with the, the pertinent folks and, and make the necessary adjustments.
And I'm looking to see when the next Keep Otero Beautiful meeting is.
Thursday.
Yeah, 1:30.
Yeah, 1:30.
Make myself available, yeah.
I'll show you where we have it.
Okay, I made a motion.
All second, ma'am.
Okay.
Sorry.
All in favor, aye.
Thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, number 36, discuss and consider sending a letter to the New Mexico Department of Agriculture supporting A&amp;M Meats LLC's application for the New Mexico Local Meat Processing Grant, Competitive Grant Program.
I make a motion that we send this letter in support of A&amp;M Meats for their grant application.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number 37, request approval to appoint two members to the open seats on the Otero County Planning Commission.
James, is this yours?
No, it's only mine.
Oh, wait a minute, I got, I got 'em mixed up, they all, what number are we on, 37? I got one from.
Yeah, my, yeah, my, mine is the same, it's got James' thing and my 37.
It says James on mine too.
Tell me, anyone?
So.
Mine's at 38, so I'm like, oh, sorry.
All four of them, I'm assuming?
Uh, yes, so, I guess I'll make it official. Hi, uh, commissioners, James Bowman, Otero County Assessor. Um, yeah, just basically here to get, uh, approval from the commissioners for my valuation protestant board in the event that we do and of going to any formal protest. I'm not sure if she provided the names in, on the email whenever I put it in there, but I'll just go ahead and state them just for record too. The four members that I'm, uh, I have reached out to and they have agreed are Candace Arano of the NIM Premier Real Estate, formerly known as ERA, Samantha Howard of KA Realty, Anastasia Hobby of KA Realty, and Joaquin Silva of Reliance Real Estate Group of Alamo River.
Do we have any questions or?
How did you select these people?
Um, I asked, honestly. Um, it's, it's, it's kind of like, it's one of these things that I'm actually, you know, each year that I've been, uh, the assessor, I'm learning new things, and it's something that's actually been kind of, I honestly wanna say, kinda overlooked. I know in the past, they used to kinda do it regularly, because there used to be more actual protest hearings. Between myself and Ricardo already, and my deputy, we do a pretty decent job of meeting with people informally, discussing property valuation and understanding what is correct and what's not correct. And we avoid the formal protests. Just because I feel like if we can get it solved before we go that way, it saves people time, effort, and sometimes other people money. So, we really haven't had to kinda get a board. However, on my last audit, is one of the things that we failed to do to get it, uh, appointed. And I learned, actually, it's technically, uh, by statute, it's actually supposed to be appointed by the commissioners. Um, I believe you're actually supposed to be the ones that go out and find these people and get them to agree. But I think it's been kinda like a common courtesy that I would just say like, hey, I'll try to find them for you if you guys just wanna approve them. That way you guys don't have to spend your time doing that when you guys have other things to do, so.
The reason I asked you that is because, isn't it supposed to go out for public, um, for them to actually try and apply? Are we violating that?
I don't know how the protest board works. You know how we advertise Planning Commission?
Right.
And those aren't required that we do that either. We just do it because we wanna be transparent and get as many applicants.
I think we're following our, whatever policies we've established in our ordinances for these things.
Yeah, but I don't know about the protest board.
Right, and like I said, I, I kinda looked into, uh, the last couple of my predecessors and seeing like how they did it and things like that. And there was a letter saying, stating, you know, the county commission has approved you as being a board selecte or something like that. But again, I don't know the last time that the county actually has gone forth and found the people from the public to do this. So, again, you know, it's just kinda like, for me, it's, I kinda just look out and I look to see like I got it. I found someone that I know does a little bit of both commercial and, uh, real estate, which is Samantha Howard. Um, I know that Cand- uh, Candace Arano, she is the broker and the lead person over at the NIM Premier Real Estate. And then, again, just kinda like finding out other, I just kinda looked and see like who has good reputations on, you know, understanding market and things like that. And just kind of, again, just picked out people. I had a few people that I asked, they're not certified, so they couldn't do it. And some people said, nah, I'm all right, you know, so it's kinda like, you know, you know, who wants to? And again, this is all in the event that we actually have a formal hearing, which, as of right now, we technically don't have one. The one that would be one is a completely different matter that is being handled, uh, by RB and, uh, whoever else we're having involved in that matter, so. But yeah, other than that, like I said, we haven't had an actual formal protest in the last, my three years that I've been the assessor. Again, we do a pretty good job of, you know, getting things understood and, uh, again, mostly for my job, it's, it's education, cause many people don't understand what we do, how we do, when we do it, why we do it. And we just basically explain those things to, uh, property owners. And once we kinda talk about it, we educate them normally nine times out of 10, everything is, actually, I guess I should say 10 times out of 10, cause we have had to do this before, um, everything's usually resolved, so. Again, just kinda jump into the hoops, you know?
So, we're only gonna pick two of these four? So we're only going to pick two of these four?
So yeah, so there's two, no, 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 all four get approved. Two of them would be part of the hearing and then the state would actually send someone from PTD to be a part of the, they're the third member. The other two are alternate, so you always basically have to have two people to step in in the event that the other two cannot be there at that time. So by the, my auditors, they said I need four, so I got four.
I'm okay with all four.
Okay.
Did they, James, verify the qualifications on the statute?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And I actually sent out like, kind of like a impromptu kind of letter asking them to either accept it or deny their request. And then once, you know, I got them approved by you guys, I didn't want to send them a letter that saying, you know, the Commissioners have selected you and you guys technically haven't said anything because I was going to pitch you guys in that spot either. So once that's done, I will send another letter saying, you know, that you have been approved and in the event that protest does come apparent, then they would basically be told the schedule of what's going to happen and everything like that. I also sent them the W-9, I think that it is, that is associated with this because technically I think they are paid $80 a day for when they do have to do this stuff, so we just have that stuff ready to put on file and everything too, so.
How much?
Eighty.
Eighty, I thought you said eight, and I'm like, I wouldn't even waste my time.
Yeah, so yeah, if that was the case, I would have just kept on, I'm not going to even bother, you know? But yeah, so again, just kind of, from what I've seen in the past, it just kind of seemed like, you know, common courtesy, they just kind of like, hey, here's these people. I'm all for, you know, sending it out to the public if you want to do that again, you know, going next year, because it actually saves me some time in having to try to find these people and do the research myself, so I mean, that'd be great, but again, just trying to help you guys out the best I can.
I really feel they need to be in the realty business because they'd be able to, what you're, what you're, they're going to be protesting and arguing against is what you evaluate a property value at, or if they can prove it or you, and they got the, they have the means to kind of do evaluations.
Right, right. Yeah, and the way that the protest would happen is, you know, it's, it would basically be out of our hands as far as the assessor's office. We technically have the presumption of correctness per state statute, so they have to prove to the board that their value actually is the correct value. We just kind of wait the results, honestly, whenever, if that were to happen, so, but yeah, so.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, all right. I make a motion for the approval of appointment of protest board members and alternate still Otero County equalization.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we'll jump back to 37. Thank you, James. Request approval to appoint two members to the open seats on the Otero County Planning Commission.
Commissioners, we do now have four applicants. We've been trying to get somebody appointed over the past three months.
Yes.
I only have real strong feelings. One is Cody Jones, he is a surveyor, he would be good on the deal. Any of the other three would be, you know, whichever one wants to do it.
So we only have.
Did you interview these?
I, no, I just did the letters of interest.
Oh.
I would, I would say Cody and Louis Cobberubius.
And Priscilla is real estate.
Okay, we only need two, right?
Mm-hmm.
Again, on a real estate deal, it would probably be a little helping factor. I know Louis is, he's a sharp, good young man, so I don't know what it's, like I say, I only, just the one.
Who are you thinking?
Priscilla and Louis.
Priscilla, real quick.
Who?
Priscilla Taylor.
Uh-huh.
This is Reliance Real Estate, I think.
Yeah, but.
Is that what it's called?
You don't want the surveyor that, the surveyor's the one who's going to have knowledge on all this stuff with compliance, elevations, and the whole nine yards. I mean, we do have one on there already, Baxter, right?
Yeah, I would go with Louis and Priscilla. I mean, if we've got Baxter on there, we've got one surveyor on there, so that would be good. Who do you, who do you go? You're going to have to pick.
Priscilla and Louis.
You what?
Priscilla and Louis.
This is kind of one of those, this, can you vote or not?
I won't vote, you don't want me?
Oh, is that, oh, I was not thinking of his first name, yeah. So are you going to, recuse yourself? Okay, well, I'm going with Louis and Priscilla. Did you want?
Well, as long as we got Baxter on there, I mean, it's, you're on the planning committee, who, do you have any preferences on?
I would really prefer to have two surveyors on there. The opportunity to have two surveyors serve on the planning commission would be fantastic. The knowledge and experience that they would bring to the table would just be really good.
And they're very familiar with our subdivision ordinance too.
Since they do claims of exemptions, they do the subdivisions.
So then I would think Priscilla then, just because of real estate.
So Priscilla and Cody? Who do you have pick besides Cody?
Well, I had Priscilla, she was on the deal, but this is really, it's a common sense thing too, so. Either one, Louis, Louis or Priscilla, either one. I think Cody would be the top of the choice.
So I make a motion to approve Priscilla and Cody.
Okay, I'll go with that, you go with that? Okay, all right, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
So you got Cody and Priscilla, this note taker? Holy cow, we're getting to the end.
I make a motion, we skip all the.
All the rest?
Yeah, except for the executive session. Because there's a whole audience that really doesn't care.
We are, just the executive, right?
With just the reports, do we want, can we skip the reports to save time or do we?
I have nothing anyway.
The only thing we need to address is your request of.
Yeah.
So our next meeting is.
I think it's like the 14th. Okay.
The 14th, okay? I cannot go later. I'll be, I don't know where I'll be, in Georgia.
This is for August, correct?
Yeah, I, actually, I can drive back on the 14th because I'll be in Ridosso, but I can, I can come home for that on the 14th and then I'll just drive back up. The week before, I'm in Farmington.
I can do it on the 15th.
Staff isn't here on the 15th?
Yeah, they're closed on Friday.
Unless you want to pay overtime.
The 18th will be hell, what I could do it, other than that, I have to do it on.
It should be a very short one. If we do it on the 14th, that's only a couple of weeks.
But you have to drive from where to where?
From Ridosso, I'd have to come back down. But I mean, I could do it if, excuse me, if you guys couldn't do it any other time.
I can do, when are you going to be gone?
I'm going to be gone the 11th through the 15th.
Okay. That's it, I mean, other than that, it'd be the 25th for me, the 26th.
I'll just drive back, I'll come back on the 14th.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's not that far, I do it all the time, so we'll keep it on the 14th. Okay, so. Okay, I make a motion to hold an executive session under NMSA 1978 10-15-1 to discuss pending and threatened litigation and a personnel issue.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Good to go, roll call.
Oh, we got to do a roll call.
Commissioner Markort?
Here.
Commissioner Mavady?
Yes.
Commissioner Barilla?
Yes.